I'm going to call the meeting to order and ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Little.
Here.
Councilmember Sander.
Here.
Councilmember Budge.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Mayor.
Is present. Mayor Pulapati.
Here.
I'm going to ask the city clerk to announce the meeting's video recording and playback schedule.
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council is recorded with closed captioning. The recording will be cable cast on Metro Cable Channel 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. The recording will also be video streamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will replay on Thursday, March 6th at 9:00 a.m. and Friday, March 7th at 6:00 p.m. on Metro Cable Channel 14. Once posted, the recording of this meeting can also be viewed on demand at youtube.com/metrocable14. A DVD copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department, and a webcast of this meeting will be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
We're going to go to Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm going to ask Cheryl to please lead the pledge, and I invite the audience to remain standing for invocation, and Deacon Walt Little will give the invocation.
Everybody ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag for the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Master of the universe, keep us humble. Remind us that the truest and deepest sense of power is formed in communion with you, and that compassion and integrity give form and evidence to this in our public and private lives. Fill us with your gentle grace as we remember how precious and fragile life is. Keep before us the names and faces of all who helped to shape our lives, for we owe so much to those who walked ahead, who kept the faith, who carried the lamp of freedom for us all. Inspire in us the courage to form decisions in which justice is the prevailing force and the guiding light. May your presence and wisdom fill us and lead us, and may your spirit keep alive in all of us a healthy sense of humor and a respect for ourselves and for one another. Amen.
Thank you. We're going to move on to presentations. The first is Cordova Community Council 65 Years in Counting.
Woo! Let's go, Shelley!
Well, thank you so much. Let me get started here. How about that? There we go. Wanted to thank you for having us here on the occasion of our 65th year of making fun in Rancho Cordova, not fun of, but fun in Rancho Cordova. We're just going to take a, this is going to be a brief presentation with some fun numbers for you to digest about where we are and where we're going in the next year. Just a quick update, we're going to just go over a little bit for who we are, in case you're new to town. I want you to meet our team. We've got a lot of new people on our team. We're going to talk about our 2024 highlights and then some goals for the current year, in 2025. So who are we? We were founded in 1959 in what was probably a pretty undeveloped patch of dirt that was called Mills and later Rancho Cordova. And the whole purpose was to foster collaboration in community life here. It was started by the same small group of people who had founded the Cordova Recreation Park District, the Rancho Cordova Rotary Club, and the Rancho Cordova Chamber of Commerce. We've nurtured this idea of collaboration for 65 years, and the spirit of working together, like we promote in Rancho Cordova, is really a hallmark of community life here. We encourage and we honor volunteerism. We couldn't do it without our volunteers, and we really are here to help you fall in love with our city. I want you to meet our team. These are the pretty ones. The rest of us, not so much. But our team is, we've got Cheryl Gleason, who's the MAC art director and curator over at the Mills Station Arts and Culture Center. Jason Harper works with the Rancho Cordova Athletic Association. Lee Rochette is our event engineer and facility director. Those are some of our event specialists, including JR Sterba, event specialist, Andrea Medina, and Taylor Haven, all event specialists. And then Brian Danzel is our specialist with food trucks and logistics support. And yes, you do need a specialist to work with food trucks. Here's some numbers for you to chew on tonight. In 2024, we planned and executed 204 events throughout the year. Isn't that amazing? Those include really big events like our community volunteer awards and the Kids' Day in the Park and I-Fest and Memorial Day, and of course, all of our activities around the Rancho Cordova 4th of July, Sports Hall of Fame, Heartstopper's Haunted House, Cordova Community Christmas Tree Lighting, shown here. So we are busy all the time. But there's, just to give you an idea of how busy it is over at the MAC, MAC events accounted for more than 100 of these great events. And they're smaller, but they're every bit as much important. We also support our fellow nonprofits with advocacy and equipment and expertise so that their events are great in Rancho Cordova. And we do help a lot of other nonprofits in Rancho Cordova be successful in their own events. So there is a great multiplier here. A little bit about RCA.
Thanks. Thank you, Shelley. Mayor and council, I want to thank you for first and foremost your generosity to the youth of our city. I have a firsthand and a front row look to see how it's being impacting and changing their lives. So on my, on behalf of our leagues' coaches, thank you for that. We had an incredible year this last year in 2024, but let me share with you the three kind of engines that we push from. Number one is a field enhancement. Working with the city alongside the park district, we want to give our kids here in Rancho Cordova an incredible venue to play at, courts or play fields. And so we infuse the leagues to make sure, and it's a constant working process, to make sure that they're playing in good, adequate, safe environments. Secondly, we want to make sure that families do not have a hurdle or a barrier to entrance because of money. And so we've been very liberal, very generous in our fee support, and we've implemented with some of our leagues, hopefully soon all of our leagues, a process called "Serve to Save," where if a family needs to save some money on their registration, they're able to partner with the league and fill some key roles. And the last one is we want to use sports as a vehicle to teach life lessons for kids. The best way to teach them is through the area of character development and competition. When I came onto this team, the goal was to grow by 5% a year for the next five years, and I'm happy to report that our leagues showed a growth of, in 2024, of 13%, with not one of our leagues decreasing numbers. We are very pleased with that. How are we going to do all this? Well, my goal and my passion has been to look over the surrounding of the area and see that our kids, from the youngest to our graduating seniors, get into a pipeline of quality and success, of character and competition. And seeing that, it means that the high school's got to be a shining destination where our kids can go and be proud of going to. And so we spent a lot of shoulder, a lot of energy pushing the plow at the high school this last year, working alongside the football team, and athletes only, that coaches and teachers selected 100 of the athletes of influence on campus, where we did a one-day full lab of learning in the symposium. And we also, if you'll notice in that picture, we engaged our student athletes across the campus to start getting involved in serving. The flags that you saw on Folsom Boulevard on Veterans Day were in part placed by our football team, and these are the ones of our future Hall of Famers that were the hosts greeting our now legacy Hall of Famers at the great Hall of Fame event, the 9th Annual. This coming year will be our 10th Annual Hall of Fame Event, of which those students will also be serving alongside other sports now, because baseball and basketball's asked to get involved. So what are we going to do in 2025? Well, we're going to keep pushing that plow hard. We're going to continue pushing for that 5% growth. I do believe optimistically, and given the numbers that we're seeing so far, it'll be above that. We want to really continue to solidify our MOU in partnerships with the park district, as well as the city, to keep those field and field access growing. And we also want to continue to teach our coaches, as well as our players and our parents, the Cordova Way. And I forgot to bring, I'm going to go get this. We have a sign that's about yay big, and 70 of those signs, called the Cordova Way, were printed, and we ratified those over about six months of planning to where everybody had buy-in to it. And 70 of those signs are plastered all over around, hopefully at our leagues, our courts, where our presidents have put them up, reminding our fans that there is a Cordova Way of how we do things. And it starts by respecting those who are with us, those around us, and those we compete against. So again, I want to say thank you for giving us this generous platform to teach sports and to use it as a vehicle to teach life lessons. Thank you. And now I'd like to introduce Cheryl.
I was like, wow, that's how you're going to play, huh? Thank you, Mayor Pulapati and council and guests. So it's been a very, very busy year in 2024. Not to put a fine point on it, but we do have statistics to share with you tonight. Our contract with the city is to have at least a minimum of six exhibits per year. We've never had six exhibits. The lowest we've ever had is eight, and that was our very first year. Last year, we hosted 10 exhibitions. We were open for 90 days. That doesn't sound like a lot to some of you, but those other two days a week are filled with the planning, scheduling, and getting of all those events to work, because we have a very small staff. There's one and a half of us. So it takes a lot of planning. Last year, we saw 5,308 people that came to attend activities, exhibits, concerts at the MAC. That is up over the last three years substantially. We had an average, if you take those 5,000 and divide it by the 90 days, that averages 60 people a day. The only arts and culture center in the Sacramento area that's getting that is the Crocker. Think about that. There is no gallery, no, that is getting that kind of traffic on a weekly basis than the Crocker and the MAC. Last year, we did 11 concerts. We had 25 artist workshops. We did four artist professional development classes, hosted or sponsored by both the MAC and Rancho Cordova Arts. That is to offer the professional development to make our artists professional in their current situation. And that might be anything from writing a CV, how to write a grant, do you know about technology, AI, how does that affect you legally? So we have a lot of different classes like that. One of the things when we have an exhibit downstairs, we have an exhibit upstairs focusing on a local artist. That is our incubator to give our artists an opportunity to learn what it's like to have a solo show. They have to come up with the name, the thread, curate their own work, hang their own work, and then have an artist talk, which, for most people, that's the scariest part, to get up in front of people. So we had six of those last year. Some highlights we had last year. One of the biggest highlights is always our student show. It drives the most visitors, because we have parents and grandparents. More times than not, several people come more than once. Last year was our largest show in six years. Our first one, I had a really hard time getting 200. Last year, 551 pieces of art from TK through 12th grade. Now imagine that piece of paper coming in. It's just an eight-and-a-half-by-eleven sheet of paper, or whatever. We personally cut mats for all of those pieces. That is 40 hours of mat cutting alone for this show. We engaged 70 schools. We had 60 teachers participating. It was a direct correlation of Rancho Cordova Arts and their fundraiser of Micro Masterpieces that gave away that year a little over $15,000. This year, we gave away $21,000, so I am afraid we are into at least 60 hours of mat cutting this year. For those of you that don't think arts and culture drives the economic business in Rancho Cordova, our artist, just at the MAC, grossed $36,592. That is sales from the gallery on a variety of shows, open studios, and Winterfest. That's a lot. Then they go out to lunch, they come, and they see other things. So what are we looking for this year? Every year is constant improvement. This year is all about collaboration. This year, I'm collaborating with a new platform to streamline our submission process. We've gone paperless. This is going to save reams of paper. In March, I'm collaborating with Charles Lago, the Calcap Film Studios, in an exhibit called Checkmate. We have over 80 chessboards handmade from all over the world. In April, the 6th Annual Student Show, I collaborate with teachers. This year, it'll be 114 teachers that we'll be collaborating with in 17 schools and three districts. In August, as Jason mentioned, the Champions Show. RCA is celebrating its 10th anniversary, so we're going to have a two-week sort of rebroadcast, reboot of the Champions Show that we had three years ago. And lastly, the last collaboration is with Veterans Art Institute, which has roots that started right here in Mather by Kathleen Ellerton. She started the Art Institute. So that show will consist of art only made by veterans, both in and outside our community. So that's what we're looking forward to this year. Thank you again for your continued support for all of the arts in Rancho Cordova. We have done nothing but grow in the last seven years.
Cheryl neglected to mention that. The MAC was the most beautiful voting center in all of Sacramento County. The MAC was a voting center. People came in, saw the art, and the people who worked on the primary loved it so much, they all wanted to come back, and they were there for the general as well. And they became docents when they weren't helping.
They headed out magnets. They talked about the show. They were super excited.
So, yeah. So overall, our goals for 2025, you've heard a little bit about them. We're going to grow our volunteer community. We had a little bit of a step backwards after COVID, but we are on track now to grow our volunteer community, because we cannot do it without them. We intend and we will deliver great events that are fun, that boost community love, and that make you proud to be from Rancho Cordova. We will find our community gaps and fill them. We are growing fast. People are moving in every day. We know we have some gaps there, and we're going to find those people, and we're going to have, get them to join in with us. We're going to grow youth sports participation by 5% while building better athletes and better people. And we're going to make Rancho Cordova the place, THE place, for art and artists. We will help you fall in love with our city all over again in 2025. So it's never a Cordova Community Council presentation without some pretty pictures. So I'm just going to show you a very brief video that we were using to sort of get volunteers excited about being in Rancho Cordova, so enjoy. So before we sit down, there's some of my board members here. I don't want to lose my job. So David Sander is our chairman. I think I saw Stacy Delaney is here. Kurt Haven is here. We have great board members. Who else?
Adam Larrett.
Oh, Adam Larrett is also here. But our greatest, and they're great assets for sure, but our greatest partner of all is all of you in the city of Rancho Cordova. It is such an honor to serve you in the wonderful residents of Rancho Cordova. We're here to answer any questions you might have, but that's us in a nutshell.
Thank you, Shelley. Colleagues, do you want to?
I've only got one question before David takes over. So Lee promised me that the Christmas tree was going to go up at least 10 feet. So just wanted to make sure that's in the, because he's, don't turn red on me. Don't do that. We promised at least another 10 feet in the Christmas tree by the end of this December. So just so you know, serious looking forward to it as the first Indian female mayor, and we'd hate to let her down.
I would like to say that, you know, when I was being sworn in as mayor, the first public comment was on the Christmas tree lighting.
Just so we know, growing Christmas trees.
So noted.
So, thank you, Shelley. I'm just so pleased that our pro-youth kids were here tonight to see this. This is the second video they've seen in two weeks that should inspire them to get, to want to be involved in Rancho Cordova or give them something they want to attend. And I'm hoping all the tapping feet out there indicate a willingness to participate.
Do your volunteers have to be 18-plus? Otherwise, we'll sign all of them up.
We have a lot of youth volunteers. They usually volunteer as part of an organization with one of their adult leaders with them. We have hundreds of youth volunteers. Someone has to carry the heavy stuff, right? And our youth volunteers, ranging from football players to pro-youth, I hope, they're wonderful volunteers.
Somebody in the front row is pointing at somebody else to help carry all the heavy stuff. And that goes for the MAC as well.
That's right.
That are interested in the arts.
Well, I'd like to say congratulations on 65 incredible years of service. You've put a scare and a smile on the faces of people in Rancho Cordova. So thank you for all that you do, from sports to arts. We are truly grateful. This is a passion project. We all know this is, volunteering is a thankless job, but we are truly thankful for you.
Thank you.
Shelley, tell them what the very first project that the community council was successful in.
I don't know what the first one was, Linda, but I will say the most important one was when we helped form the city of Rancho Cordova.
That's true.
The three people who signed your petition for the incorporation of Rancho Cordova were three Cordova Community Council officers, and we were very, I would say that was our finest moment.
That's a good thing.
I just want to sort of remark on how far we've come. You know, Cheryl, I saw you talking about the children's art, you know, the school kids' art show that we do every year, and you probably remember the very first one. When we had, on the Rancho Cordova side, we had submissions from St. John Vianney, nowhere else. And then we had just a load of art from Folsom submitted to our children's art show, right?
And teachers.
And teachers, right?
To fill the walls.
Right. Now, think about how far we've come from basically not having any place where local kids are going to be able to exhibit their art or show their art, to getting them all engaged to the extent that you're now even supplying them with art supplies in schools to do that. And you made all that connection, built all that community. That's just incredible. And that, kind of in a nutshell, is sort of the secret of success to this organization, because this organization is not there because people are making money off of something. This is pure volunteerism. This is what being a resident of a place, being a citizen of a place, is about. It's about giving back, being engaged in your community, not consuming something from your city, but being a part of your city. And we're tapping into that in a way that no other jurisdiction in America really does. So we are like a shining light on the hill with regard to community activism and involvement in this way, where people get together to build better things and better opportunities for their neighbors. So yeah, you all are, you are all to be congratulated on just doing an incredible job at that and really for setting a national standard.
Well, thank you. We're having fun.
Thank you, Shelley. Before you leave?
Yes.
We have a proclamation for you.
Oh, all right. Jason's saying, what's a proclamation? It's not bad. It's a good thing.
Okay, I'm not going to read all the whereas, 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 but I want to say you guys are the heart of what makes Rancho Cordova smile. So thank you. I'd like to call upon the council to come down while we give the proclamation. We'll go take a picture of it.
Can I bring my team?
Of course.
Okay.
This is what it is.
Yeah, much picture.
Come on, Larrett. Get up here. Squeeze in here. Squeeze in. Get on in there.
Sorry, Scott.
Squeeze in.
I'm going to do it to the side.
Okay, ready? We'll get the official one. We're going to get in there.
You know what? Put on the filter. There. Okay, great. Of course.
You can work for facilities.
Okay, so the new employees have seen what a fun city Rancho Cordova is and what the Cordova Community Council does. We would like to now, you know, meet some of the new employees. And I'll ask for Stacy for the first new employee introduction.
So we have a new employee on our city clerk team, and that is Rachel Dewey. We might have stolen her from a neighboring agency, so we're very excited to have her join us. She started with that agency in their public works department and then transitioned to the city clerk's department. And she actually sought me out at a conference that Persephone and I attended not too long ago in December, and we were very excited that she was super eager to join our team, which was fantastic, and had applied, and she's coming in with some great experience. So I'm going to let her introduce herself.
So thank you for welcoming me as the new deputy city clerk. As Stacy mentioned, I did come from nearby, which introduced me to the clerk world, and I definitely fell in love with it. So I'm excited to come over here and bring my skills and start serving the Rancho Cordova community. Jacob joined the Finance Team in January as a Finance Analyst, too, and his primary focus will be in payroll and in grants, along with assisting the Finance Team in completing the annual financial audit. Jacob grew up in the city of Bakersfield, and he is a first-time college graduate. So Jacob earned his degree in accounting at St. Mary's and comes to us from the city of San Luis Obispo. I always want to say Cal Poly, but there is a city there. Where he's worked for the past five years as an analyst overseeing the Revenue Management Division. Outside of work, Jacob enjoys hiking, golf, and pickup basketball. Jacob is a certified massage technician, and he's looking forward to growing his profession with the educational opportunities that this region does, will be providing for him. So we're excited to have Jacob join the team, and we are looking forward to watching him grow in not only his career, but in the department.
Here, here.
Do you have anything you'd like to add?
Many people I've come across asked why I left San Luis Obispo. Perfect weather, good beach town. And really, the simple answer is it's just incredible how involved this community is. I know that Councilmember Sander just talked about that recently. But it's just from staff to people I run into in the community, it's just an incredible place to be, and I'm excited to be here. So thank you.
And now, I'll call Amanda Norton for an employee that does not need an introduction.
Good evening, Amanda, Mayor, members of the council. Amanda Norton with your Economic Development Department. And yes, Laura has made it a little easy for me this evening. I'll let her do most of the talking, but I want to introduce Laura as one of our boomerang club members. For those who are not used to that term, it's those folks who started off part of their career here with Rancho Cordova and then went off and grew professionally. And then, when an opportunity presented itself, came on back. So I'm really fortunate in Economic Development to be able to grow our team. We have two other members, so there's been three of us. And so Laura brings the fourth, and I'll let her go ahead and describe herself.
Thank you, Amanda. And thank you, Mayor and council members, for welcoming me back. I am very happy. I think me coming back is a testament to the greatness of the city. I am also a resident here, been since 2011. Started off in Stone Creek and bought a dirt lot in North Douglas in 2015. So it's my 10-year anniversary out there this year. So I'm raising my family here, too. So this role in Economic Development's really important to me, and I just couldn't be more proud to be here and working with this amazing team. So, thank you. Amazing team. I didn't gesture wide enough. Sorry. It's this team.
And what do we learn about leaving us?
Don't do it again.
Micah.
The boomerang club is a special club. I mean, I happen to know a member or two, so.
Yeah, they're probably the founding precedents. Welcome, Laura. We're glad to have you.
Thank you. Thank you, dear.
We're going to move on to public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time by completing and submitting a speaker card to the city clerk. If items on the agenda, speakers will be called by the mayor at the point on the agenda when the item will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep comments to three minutes or less and to state name and community of residence. Under the provisions of the California Government Code, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. That was passed, but I'll call the city clerk to see if we have any public comment.
We have one public comment. Jorge Polo Tomas.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Jorge Polo Tomas. I am speaking here today to talk to you about ensuring the future of our community and construction industry. This all begins with the pre-qualification language of our local developments. First, I want to emphasize the importance of health care for the workers building our community. Personally, my wife has heart problems and requires constant treatment. Without health coverage, the financial burden would be overwhelming. Many families like mine rely on health care to avoid falling into debt. By supporting contractors who offer health care, you're not just investing in projects, you're investing in the people who make our community better. As leaders, you have the ability to create policies that require contractors to provide health care for workers, raising the standards in the construction industry. Another important thing to think about is hiring people from our local community. Sometimes, we must travel two to three hours away for jobs, which means we are spending money on gas and food in other areas, and it means our town misses important tax revenue. With driving far for work, this takes a toll on our bodies, and personally, it takes time from our family. There is no time in between the week we get up, eat, shower, and sleep, and then wake up to do a little over there again the next day. This can all be changed with local hiring. Along with local hiring, we also need to make sure that the people we hire are trained for the job for the apprenticeship program. For that, apprenticeship programs can solve this problem. These programs help train tens of thousands of Californians each year to be ready for good jobs. And the best part is, they do not cost taxpayers anything. Policies like pre-qualification make sure that the contractors hire apprentices and do their part in building a strong local workforce. Lastly, and most importantly, is making sure people earn a living wage. It is important that our community workers make enough money to live on. Without fair pay, personally, I know I wouldn't be able to purchase a home and give my family a better life. I know you want the best for our community, and you will make the right choices to help it thrive. Thank you for your time.
Mayor Pillo Patti, that's all the public comment we have.
We're going to move on to Agenda 11. Item number 11, council reports. Start with Councilmember Little.
Yeah, I had the library board meeting last week. Hooray, I'm on the budget audit committee. Very excited. I was voluntold to do it, and I would look really bad if I turned it down, so I'm on it. What else, what else? Garrett couldn't go, so I went to SAC Metro's Vice Mayor Regional Meeting. They really invited everyone. We got a decent turnout for people who actually showed up, Capitol Mall on Friday morning. And just talked about, I mean, I gave our spiel about what we're doing and what we're excited about, and other people at other cities had their priorities. There's a lot of focus on Prop 4 cities with kind of climate concerns that don't necessarily affect us and mostly water-based. And then yesterday, I toured SAC Splash. They had one of their rare public days. Took a car ride over to some vernal pools. It was rain or shine. I was really hoping they'd cancel it once we got out there, and it was pouring down, and none of the kids reacted, and it was like, man, I'm going to be the wimp, like old person. The kids just don't mind if they're in rain, which is crazy. And so they stuck it out, so I did, and it was a cool, cool little thing. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember.
I love that tour. Yeah, it's really surprising. It's really a unique thing that we've got that a lot of people who live here have never heard of, like, the vernal pools, that whole ecosystem. So had an interesting couple of weeks. Attended a League Board meeting, Cal Cities League Board meeting, that's League of California Cities, in Rancho Cucamonga, because the current president is from Rancho Cucamonga. And of course, that's the city that at a statewide level, we're always confused with, because you'll start to say Rancho, and they'll automatically think Rancho Cucamonga because it's older and bigger. And so it was fun to be Rancho Cordova and Rancho Cucamonga. But we actually held the meeting at a cultural center they have, which is a combination of a library, a theater, and some meeting space. And the third floor of their library really is more like a children's museum than anything else, except unlike our children's museum, they sort of take all the exhibits out and then redo it every year or so. So it's like a total turnover, like, theme. So it'll be jungle for a year, and then the next year, it'll be knights in castles. And then the year after that, it'll be deserts or whatever. It's really, really an interesting way they run it. But it's a great combination. You see a lot of synergy when they bring those uses together. Also had meetings at Secog, Air District, SAC Sewer, nothing of which I feel I really need to, need to report. That's my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Budge.
Actually, I do need to say one thing. The Air District gave us kudos again for our Purple Air Program, which reminds me, we need to reboot, reboost the Purple Air Program to be sure we have good coverage in Rancho Cordova, because when I was there, and they were giving us kudos for deploying those sensors, these are the air quality sensors that we purchased for residents to host. So rather than the city buying, you know, an air quality measuring system and shipping that data off to the Air District, we pushed it off onto our residents who can do that with this little purple air sensor that gets deployed all over the place. And it's a perfect example of allowing residents to contribute to government instead of government just saying, oh, don't worry, I'll do that for you. This is now a partnership among the people who care about air quality and government. So it's like a real win-win. But looking at our map, we've got some gaps we should probably go out there and strategically add, or at least offer them to a few more residents.
Interesting. Okay, so our Public Works Director, Albert Stricker, made a wonderful speech at the Community Council last Friday, assisted by our 204, however many, events at Community Council. But Albert did a wonderful job and talked about everything that's coming in Rancho Cordova and what is going on currently. I knew the pro-youth kids because I was privileged to go speak to them last week and talked about everything. They really wanted to know, how does one incorporate a city? So David, you would be, you know, I did talk a little bit about the history and how we got here. But then, basically, the whole agonizing process of getting through LAFCO and getting to the ballot and our incredible 77% of the vote and those kinds of things. And then, we showed that marvelous video that we saw last week about all of the things that are going on in Rancho Cordova, the one that Lori Ann showed about all of the community activities in Rancho Cordova. So like I said, tonight, combined with that and the video from the Community Council, they ought to be able to find something they want to do here. Shelley and I have been selling this community for a couple of decades now on the best place you can have fun. We have fun here in Rancho Cordova, and we want everybody to know that, and we want everybody to join us in having fun, especially our kids. Public Works is going to have to take out some trees in front of Costco, and I was really thrilled to be able to meet Public Works out there to talk about a very few trees that need to come down simply because they are encroaching on others or hanging out into the roadway or whatever. And the whole regional conversation about how to create the best funding for public transportation in the area is an ongoing discussion between Secog and SDA and regional transit. And that's what I've been doing.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Gatewood.
We had a meeting about the connector, which is the road on the backside of Rancho Cordova. It looks like it is, we got only, not only did we get $25 million thanks to lots of hard work from my staff here at the city, but we also, it looks like we're going to get another, hopefully, extra $20 million. So by the end of this year, we should be looking at a $45 million check for Albert Stricker to make the roads better. So it's always good to come to him when we have money, because it makes him happy on the inside. That's it.
Thank you. I did not have any committee meetings this week, the last two weeks. I had a lot of mayor representation events that I'm not going to go through, but that really packed my calendar. And I want to talk about one thing, though. Last week, last time in our council meeting, we talked about the school and the situation with the school. I want to emphasize that it is against the school district, but not against the teachers. We're really thankful for the hard work that the teachers are doing, and they're doing a great job. So thank you to the teachers. This is the district and the city that were, our arguments were against. Thank you. And I will ask the city manager for his update.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of just quick announcements. One is the Documentary Film Festival is this weekend. So if you're looking to see a few documentary films and have a good time, you can enjoy that in various places all over the city. One is here in the council chambers, American River Room, or at the Youth Center. And so that event is this weekend, and so Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
Let's liven it up a bit. It's not just documentaries.
Okay, it's not just documentaries. It's all sorts of films that are really exciting.
From several countries, from lots of countries all over the world, national as well as international films.
And I think a great documentary on our Rancho Cordova Food Locker, that's one of the big shows on Friday night.
On that, and on the symphony, How You Make a Symphony.
That's right. Yep, so a bunch of good shows this weekend here at various places. The other is, we had a great general plan workshop Wednesday ago, and really had a good turnout of about 60 folks and residents who came and gave their input on the future vision of Rancho Cordova. So lots more to come to that when we get into land use, but that was a great attended meeting. Thank you for our planning team for putting that together. And then really just want to express my thanks for Albert as well, as the great presentation he did last week at the Community Council luncheon, and really appreciate the perspective of not just building roads and streets and doing those great things and maintaining them, but really a vision for the community that's bigger than just infrastructure, which I really appreciate, and really appreciate him in that presentation. So thank you, Albert. That's it.
Thank you. We're going to move on to Agenda Item 13, Consent Calendar Items. Consent Calendar Items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. Are there any items council wishes to pull from the consent calendar? City Clerk, do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Hearing none, I will move approval of Items 13.1 through 13.6.
City Clerk, can you please call a roll?
We need a second.
Second.
Thank you.
Can you now please call a roll?
Yes. Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Yep.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Little.
Hell, yeah.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Yep.
Mayor Pillo Patti.
Yes. We're going to move on to Agenda Item 16, a fun topic. Well, I'll let the city clerk announce the fun topic.
Fiscal Year 2025 Through 2027 Budget Priorities Discussion.
Ken.
Thank you. This is a fun topic, by the way. So good evening, Mayor and Council, Kim Duran-Carr, Georgia Administrative Services Director. And the presentation this evening is intended to provide the council and community a high-level overview of the priorities that are being incorporated into the next two-year budget based on what we heard at the council visioning session that occurred back on January 28th. The goal this evening is to ensure these priorities and focus areas are in alignment with council expectations and to receive feedback if anything is missing or... City Clerk, do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Hearing none, I will move approval of Items thirteen point one through thirteen point six.
City Clerk, can you please call a roll?
We need a second.
Second.
Thank you.
Can you now please call a roll?
Yes. Vice Mayor, uh, Gatewood.
Yep.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Little.
Hell yeah.
Councilmember Sander. Mayor Pulapati.
Yes. We're gonna go to consent, public hearing items, and they are none. So we're gonna move to public hearing items and I'm gonna ask the city clerk to announce the subject.
A resolution approving the city of Rancho Cordova's adjusted storm drainage impact fee schedule for two thousand and twenty-five, paid by developers to mitigate for their project impacts on the city's drainage system.
Dahlia, you're up.
We actually do not have a presentation for this item. We just, uh, wanted to be here to answer any questions as needed.
Super.
Okay, I'm gonna open public hearing and ask the city clerk if there's any public comment.
There is no public comment for this item.
I am going to close public hearing.
And I will move approval of Item fifteen point one.
And I will second it.
And I will ask the city clerk to call a roll.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Little.
Hell yeah.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Yep.
Mayor Pulapati.
Yes. We're gonna move on to Agenda Item sixteen, a fun topic. Well, I'll let the city clerk announce the fun topic.
Fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five through two thousand and twenty-seven budget priorities discussion.
Ken.
Thank you. This is a fun topic, by the way. Um, so good evening, Mayor and Council, Kim Duran, Kara Georgiou, Administrative Services Director. And the presentation this evening is intended to provide the council and community a high-level overview of the priorities that are being incorporated into the next two-year budget based on what we heard at the council visioning session uh, that occurred back on January twenty-eighth. Uh, the goal this evening is to ensure these priorities and focus areas are in alignment with council expectations and to receive feedback if anything is missing or if we're not on the right track in any of these areas.
Do, are we talking money today or more like this is the direction we would like you to come back with, with numbers for us to take a look at?
Yeah, so the goal this evening is not to talk about numbers. I know you're disappointed.
I just did all this about numbers.
Not all of us are disappointed, Kim. Uh, the, the goal this evening is to really focus on sort of activity and focus areas and priorities for the next two-year budget. And then staff will take that feedback, go back, put together a work plan and then come back with, then the numbers.
Then we talk about numbers. I just want everyone to know I put my own reports together, myself using ChatGPT. Everyone should be impressed. And you can do it too. Just take our budgets, shove it in a ChatGPT and say, make it easy to understand. And it spits out a three-page paper that's just amazing. We're very techie. Go ahead.
I, I will say just generally, if there are some big numbers or big things that you're thinking about, that would be appreciated now the time to hear some of that is not just a, um, but if there's big initiatives or things that you're thinking about that we have missed from a topic standpoint, that would be the time to, to talk about it and suggest it too.
Okay.
So the five pillars or strategic focus areas, uh, that you see on this slide were discussed with the council at the January twenty-eighth work session and are the guiding the work plan for the next two-year budget. Uh, the presentation this evening will highlight the programmatic focus areas and projects planned in each of these focus areas over the next two years. Um, and so initially this presentation tonight was, uh, anticipated to be done in a workshop setting. Uh, however, given that we've shifted it to, uh, the regular calendar, we could approach it a couple of different ways. My initial thought was to walk through kind of this, each slide for each strategic focus area and, or slides and then stop and receive council feedback as we go, or I can just go through the entire presentation, uh, whichever the preference of the council.
No, I like the idea of making it fast and efficient. Hit each one and we'll just go over them.
Okay.
Siri.
Madam Mayor.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. So, uh, the only slide that's going to talk about kind of skim about numbers, we're not going into numbers, but just a high-level overview, uh, overall, the budget going into the next two years remains strong. Uh, we don't expect to see the year-over-year gains that we kind of got used to over the last, you know, five years. Uh, we saw some unprecedented growth and we are starting to see some of our major revenue streams pull back primarily sales tax. Um, and so we've already experienced a decrease from prior year levels, uh, with sales tax, both in the general fund and CEIF. And we do expect that kind of the plateau for the next, uh, two-year cycle unless, you know, something unanticipated happens, which it often does, so remains to be seen. Uh, we also are seeing development activity remain strong in the city. Uh, however, we are monitoring whether we might start to see a bit of a shift or slowdown, uh, in the coming two years as potentially the number of permit-ready lots, uh, available uh, might impact the pace at which growth can continue occur. So that is just something that we are monitoring on the revenue side. On the expense side of the equation, uh, overall, we remain stable. A couple of noteworthy, uh, things to be aware of. As I mentioned, um, with last year's, uh, year-end report, our contract with Police Services is showing, uh, positive signs of cost containment uh, from the prior year increases that we saw maybe about three or four years ago. So that does allow for some additional growth opportunities, uh, within that service plan if desired. Uh, we also are continuing to focus on growing organizational capacity, uh, to ensure the timely delivery of projects and services to the community. And then the other thing that we do continue to monitor, uh, that we don't have a lot of control over, federal government uncertainty, uh, may be impacting our ability to receive grants and obtain grants and, as well as kind of potential litigation exposure. So that also continues to be monitored in the next two-year cycle. Uh, before we dive into the strategic focus areas, I do want to highlight that we did hear from the council back in January of some overarching themes that we consider to be organizational priorities in the coming two-year cycle uh, that are listed here on this slide. And so we heard, you know, the desire to make sure we're establishing clear, measurable key performance indicators to ensure outcomes are achieved. Uh, using campaign-level efforts, we're going to increase the city's proactive storytelling to highlight all the amazing things that are happening in Rancho Cordova. And then as well as continue to evaluate and invest in technology to enhance operational efficiency and community impact. So as we kind of go through each of those focus areas, just know that these are sort of these overarching themes that are kind of part and embedded into each of those, um, focus areas. All right. So the first, uh, area that we're going to talk about is Grow Strong Neighborhoods. And this was, uh, kind of discussed again at the January work session and we heard some of the, that the council uh, did identify this as a key priority going into the next two-year budget. And so some of the, you know, highlighted activities, uh, for the next two years that we're considering is expanding the homeless outreach team to seven days per week, uh, from the current model, which is about five days a week. Expanding neighborhood investment strategies. So some of the things that we're considering and looking to do include establishing a Rock the Block campaign, uh, for beautification and home repairs. Uh, expanding the use of some of our more successful incentive programs and continuing the proactive infrastructure investment in our neighborhoods. Uh, uh, finishing the countryside, street and sidewalk rehabilitation and, uh, beginning the Lincoln Village Street and Sidewalk Rehabilitation in the next two years. Continue investing in technology, uh, as mentioned, and also the school district reorganization effort. So these were sort of the kind of key activities anticipated in this category. So I'll pause there and see if there's any feedback or input.
So you're expanding the hot team from five to seven. You expect metrics to change or is there a need to expand it from five to seven?
So I, it's probably expanding from four to seven, right? Because it's four days a week to seven, just, um, but basically I think it's, uh, more consistent coverage over through the weekends too. And I think that's really where we see some of the challenges sometimes is, is, you know, there's a couple of days that the team has off and I'm sure Chief Tumile can, can weigh in this one as well, but I think it's really about more consistent coverage. Um, and obviously this is definitely something that if we have more consistent coverage, we will definitely see more activity with. And I think success and, and have reporting out, um, additional improvements in this area.
And word gets around on the street, like there's no coverage on the weekend. Camp out on this sidewalk because you, you're good till Monday. So it kind of just, we've seen it over in my neighborhood of just kind of the abuse on weekends. So to me, it makes a lot of sense.
I, I couldn't agree with Joe Moore. I mean, it's not that I've, it's not that I've seen it in my neighborhood specifically, but on Folsom Boulevard, um, it seems like there's really a need over the weekend.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, we, we do handle those, those efforts with patrol over the weekend still, and so we just do have teams out there. But I think this is really just a, a more targeted and specific team to make sure we're, um, hitting that need as, as appropriately as we can.
So just on the slide, we have the three, expand the homeless, expand neighborhood strat, investment, continue investing. And we do know that the school district reorganization requires additional funding. Is this all of this additional funding into the budget?
The potential is that the, all of these initiatives may require an additional funding above current levels. Yes.
Okay.
And they're going to take it and go figure out what it is and bring it back to us. David, is there anything you're thinking about, like with this kind of thing?
You know, we, we've, we've got a long-term, um, infrastructure issue. And frankly, I think we may be better off than the other local government when it comes to infrastructure. But still, uh, I think we are sliding a bit, not in my numbers, but I think Albert would probably back me up on that. We're probably spending, oh, gosh, Albert, what were the numbers you're giving me recently? Four million a year, less than we need to like keep up. Um, or to, I'm sorry, to achieve, um, the ideal maintenance level over like a ten-year period. So finding that kind of a resource in a budget, it's a big number. Relatively difficult to find. Maybe in a year or two, when revenue neutrality sort of comes back into play here, we can more easily knock that off. Say, yeah, we're going to commit to ten years to get to that point. But I think that should be a, a city goal is to get to the, the most efficient level of infrastructure maintenance so that you're not spending more than you have to and you're not spending it stupidly when you don't need to. But just hit that ideal point. And then we'd probably be the only government in California who could say we did that.
What is, what is the, what's the rule?
What I'd say real quick, we do have actually a slide or two on this and coming up, a specific thing. So, uh, uh, that was a good lead-in to the next couple of slides.
Drainage and roads and sidewalks.
You know, so the thing is, we, we did so much right at the beginning um, to repair streets that had never been touched in sixty years. But unfortunately, because we really are twenty-two or so years old, things that we cured right at the beginning need redoing, like McGregor. You know, or perhaps Lincoln Village Drive, which was one of, one of the Public Works Department's first huge successes. You know, things like that. I mean, we continue to do wonderful stuff like upgrading Matherfield Road. But in the meantime, other things that we did at the beginning need redoing.
And Garrett Moore, to your point, um, we have to, we have to find creative ways to make investments in old neighborhoods so that they're as attractive as possible to new investment. They encourage current owners to reinvest in it, you know, remodel the house, fix up the kitchen, you know, get the new roof, whatever it is, but also convince, you know, either senior citizens or middle-aged people or young couples. You know, this is a place I want to live. And so finding ways to make those old neighborhoods attractive, I think adding, you know, on the infrastructure side, it's like adding bicycle um, access to the American River Parkway. That would be like a hot thing. Because we know the number one reason people want to move to Rancho Cordova is to get close to that parkway. That's what we hear in polls anyway. But if you saw, you know, if you were in a neighborhood, like imagine Ambassador Drive with a lot of remodel activity going on, that would, that would spark more remodeling activity. But getting enough people to do it, getting the critical mass to do it, that's the hard part. We've seen cities try this all over the place. You know, some cities have house flipping programs where they try to buy the ugly house and then they invest public money and they push it up beyond a market. So it's like raise the market and create energy in the market. There are options like that, but we need to be, we need to be pretty aggressive in, in doing that.
Well, one of the streets I, I personally think is a, is a real success is Ariman. Maybe the first part of Ariman coming off of Folsom Boulevard up to the first, um, stop sign is not, or at Malaga, is not necessarily a, um, a great example. But from Malaga all the way up to Coloma, people really are taking care of their properties and our, our street frontage, um, is one of the reasons that I, I, you can assume is one of the reasons that they um, think better about their houses and they seem to be staying in, in them longer and remodeling them. Whether it's, you know, whether it's putting stucco over, um, the old, um, clevered siding or, or simply painting everything. They're doing a good job on Ariman.
I think a feeling of safety is all about lack of disorder. So if you, the street looks nice and doesn't have potholes, that's taking away disorder. That's adding order to the neighborhood and people automatically will feel safer in an environment that's well-maintained. But if they see unmoated lawns or broken gutters or trash on the street or potholes, all those things are going to tell them, this is not a cared-for neighborhood, you know, at some subconscious level. So I don't feel as safe here.
What's the PSI level we want to get our roads to? What's the safe?
Pavement condition.
I do think we, not to get ahead of ourselves, but we do have a couple of slides on these particular questions coming up, so.
Next one.
Uh, maybe this will wrap up the growing strong neighborhoods. If there's nothing else, we could move on to the infrastructure one, which is a good lead-in to.
Oh, that's why you came up.
We're supposed to whip through the strongest of our neighborhoods and then we just.
But actually Garrett asked a really good question. What, what should be our goal? You know, what's the, what's the desired standard? And at what point in your, um, pavement investigation do you, does it trigger? Does it trigger a remodel?
The, the ideal goal for the PCI, which stands for Pavement Condition Index, and this is generally a scale from zero, which is essentially a dirt road, up to a hundred, which is a brand-new road. The ideal goal is, is about an eighty. And it's truly a combination of investing in infrastructure to accommodate the new growth in Rancho Cordova as well as to continue to expand on the amazing high quality of life that we enjoy here in Rancho Cordova while also identifying how do we maintain the roads that, that we, and the infrastructure that we already have. And I have, uh, just a few of the elements here. So, uh, what is deferred maintenance? Deferred Maintenance is essentially, how much would it cost to take care of all of the, uh, to upgrade all of the roads, to repair all of the storm drains, to fix all of the broken sidewalks? And as we look at those elements for our streets, the pavement itself, that's about eighty-five million dollars if we were going to fix it all today. It would cost about, cost us about eighty-five million dollars. Our current budget is about nine million dollars. And Councilmember Sander, you're, you're correct, as we do have a shortfall in order to, between our current budget of nine million dollars and the total amount needed to, one is to just stay steady where we are, and I'm going to talk a little about that a little bit more. Or if we wanted to improve the quality of our roads to a pavement condition and index of eighty, that would be a greater amount. Um, so, eh, eh, with our current budget, we've identified, since we do have that shortfall, the deferred maintenance does grow and we, we do a, a full analysis, a full survey of all of our streets every single four years. And then in between those four years, we have models which we're able to, um, use to identify what the condition of the roads are. And we very recently did an update to that model so that we had current numbers for you. And so that's how, how we're able to tell that over the course of the next ten years, it, the deferred maintenance would grow. When we look at our, our, our streets are what we see the most and most people driving through there, but there's a huge amount of infrastructure underneath our roads that is also critical to the quality of life that we have in Rancho Cordova, to investing in our neighborhoods and promoting economic development and all of the things that go into, um, go into making Rancho Cordova a wonderful place to live. And one of those that's owned and maintained by the city is our stormwater infrastructure. We have about two hundred and fifty miles of storm, storm drains and channels and basins in, in Rancho Cordova. In addition to pump stations and all of the facilities that it takes to, to run that. So that's, we have about a hundred and twenty million dollars of deferred maintenance in our stormwater infrastructure. Our current budget is about four million dollars a year and we again have a shortfall of about four million dollars a year just to main, maintain our stormwater infrastructure in its current condition. In addition to those numbers for the streets and the stormwater, we also do have broken sidewalk in some places around the city. And as well as we have gaps in our sidewalk, we have prioritized heavily filling gaps in access to school and important resources around the city. But nevertheless, we still have gaps and some areas with sidewalk defects. That's about twenty million dollars plus. And then streetlights are some things that some neighborhoods want streetlights, some neighborhoods don't want streetlights. But if we were to install streetlights on every, every street in the city where they're missing at this time, that would be about another additional twenty million dollars. I do have a few photos up there to give you examples of poor and failed roads, which are roads with a pavement condition index of about zero up to, up to fifty. Those have significant alligator cracking on them. Um, they represent major failure. They are, uh, a huge source of potholes. They're very expensive to maintain and can have safety issues to them. Uh, fair roads may have some cracking in them and of course, brand-new roads are in, um, very, very good condition. As we look at the distribution of the condition of roadways around the city for, starting from the bottom, our poor and failed roads, that's about eighteen percent, just a hair under eighteen percent of all of the roads in Rancho Cordova are in a poor and failed condition. And then roads in the fair and good condition, that's a little bit over eighty, eighty-two percent of our roads are in that fair and good condition. And one of the really important things to note here is the cost to rehabilitate those roads. So roads that are in fair and good condition are six dollars plus per square yard to maintain, going all the way up to about fifty dollars per square yard as we transition towards, more towards the poor range. Roads that are in the failed and poor condition, um, are ten times or more uh, costly to, to maintain than those roads. So one of the really important, um, items that I wanted to highlight here is that not only with well-maintained roads do we enjoy that good quality of road, does it encourage people to invest in their private property? Does it encourage pride in our neighborhoods? Not only are these great ways that the city can directly, um, and immediately invest in neighborhoods, but it's less expensive to maintain those roads once we get there. but it's less expensive to maintain those roads once we get there. And conversely, when we have roads in poor condition, it's 10 times as expensive to maintain them. And we're, we're living with, we're living with poor roads. If we go on to the next slide, just to show where we stand in the city. We do have among the best roads in the, in the, in the region. We hover around 69 and 70 is our pavement condition index, which is on kind of in, on the border between, between fair and good. And so we're, we're up near the top. And, but this doesn't necessarily tell the entire story because we're building a lot of new roads in Rancho Cordova. So all of those new roads come in at a pavement condition index of 100. So that skews really where we, where we are in this kind of, yes.
Wondering what the asterisk stand for?
The asterisk is, this comes, this, this figure comes from another, another publication that was used in a different forum. Those asterisks identify the source of the data. So some of this data, these data are coming from Sacramento Transportation Authority and a study that they conducted. Some of these are coming directly from local agencies and the numbers that they have.
I was joking with my boss today. We do a lot of work for Eldorado County and a lot of dangerous condition cases. And their DOT team, if they saw this chart, is probably really, really happy based on how much complaints they get about their roads.
Well, conversely, anybody who drives Watt or Sunrise knows that it's not a surprise that Sacramento County is at the bottom of the list.
Well, that's not county. That's where we started.
Right.
Right?
Right.
That was us. We were that number, right?
Look what we've done. You all are putting 40 solar powered streetlights around? Is that a cost effective thing to do? I mean, obviously, you can't just go out and install a streetlight. So it needs to be something creative like solar powered. But do they cost a lot? Is that a, a good thing to do?
It is cost effective. So the, a lot of the expense of installing streetlights is actually in the underground and trenching in between those streetlights to install the power. So in this case, we save all of the costs associated with the trenching in between the streetlights. But of course, the streetlights have a battery associated with them and the solar panels. So the, the streetlight itself is a little bit more expensive. So I think that, that it's comparable. I don't have the exact numbers off the top of my head. Edgar Medina, who's leading that project, is, is here and can certainly give us details if you want to know the exact comparison.
It's, it's okay. I just, I, I think it's a really great solution personally. And as a person who's lived with streetlights for most of the time I've been in Rancho Cordova, when you go into neighborhoods without streetlights, it just seems really, really dark. And in terms of, David, as you said, in terms of public safety, it just strikes me that I prefer to feel safer with streetlights than not. But that's just my personal preference.
So going back to that slide, was there a $20 million gap in order to fix the streetlights? Or did you have a $20 million budget for streetlights?
It's roughly $20 million in order to install streetlights across the city.
So is that a gap or do you have the funding for that?
That's an unfunded gap.
Okay.
Just looking into, and I think one of the, the benefits that we have here with where we are, we do have significant challenges in addressing our deferred maintenance. But some of our nearby neighboring agencies, their challenge is almost insurmountable. The good news for Rancho Cordova is that we do have potential options. And so as I'd mentioned earlier, our road maintenance budget is about $9 million a year. And that, by the way, does rely on our team has been incredibly successful in obtaining grants. And so a portion of this does include, does include our ability to continue to pursue and be, and continue to be successful in obtaining those grants. So there are a couple of options that I have presented here. The first is the recommended option for today, and that is to maintain roughly the existing condition. And then I'll talk a little bit more about a potential future option. As Councilmember Sandra, you mentioned potential other funding sources as well that we may consider in the future. So a, a first option would be to maintain our roadways in roughly their existing condition. And this would be the, the least expensive option that would hold us over for about five to 10 years. And this would take adding about $2 million a year to that roadway maintenance budget. This would hold the average quality of our roadways about steady. However, it would mean we'd be able to, we would strategically address certain roads and some roads would have to be saved until later. And so what that meant would mean is that some roadways would improve and however, some roadways would deteriorate. It would mean that deferred maintenance with this strategy over the course of five to 10 years, deferred maintenance, although we're maintaining the average where we are, deferred maintenance would grow and ongoing maintenance costs would increase. In order to address those, would probably take another $2 million. So that would be about a gap of $4 million, which is the number that you were thinking of, Councilmember Sandra, what, in order to hold us truly steady. So about $2 million would be a stopgap over the course of the, of the next five to 10 years. Another option, as we continue to look for other funding sources, we're having very pointed and proactive conversations with CACOG about the demands of deferred maintenance and the needs to address deferred maintenance. And one of the challenges that we have is there aren't many grants to help out agencies around the region in addressing that deferred maintenance. It is a bit of a ticking time bomb that the longer we put it off, the harder it's going to be addressed. And I, I think that CACOG is hearing us. And so we're, we are hopeful that over the course of hopefully this coming funding cycle and certainly, and certainly future funding cycles, that additional funding could be available in, in addition to some of the other options that could be out there. And so the solution of bringing our roadways up to a pavement condition index of 80, which is that ideal solution where we're enjoying high quality of roads, but it's significantly less, in some cases to a factor of 10, significantly less to maintain those. That would take adding about $7 million on top of our $9 million budget. So that would be total of $16 million per year directly towards street maintenance. And this would take, this investment would be needed. It would take about 20 years at that level of investment to get up to that pavement condition index of 80. If we wanted to do it more rapidly, that would obviously cost more on an annual basis, but it would get, get us to there sooner. But I think a, a good approach would, to start with, would be to consider a 20-year program. Additional seven years, that would improve the average quality of our roadways, bringing us up to an average of 80. Deferred maintenance would be reduced. Ongoing maintenance costs would significantly decrease. And I think importantly, we would transition from doing these major rehabilitations, major overlays, major removal and replacements, which are very inconvenient to residents and the traveling public. And it would help us to more trans, trans, transfer, transition over to preservation, doing surface seals and the like, which are less impactful to residents and significantly less expensive. I do want to highlight that these options really only start to address our street maintenance. There are all of the other items that I mentioned earlier, including the stormwater deferred maintenance, $120 million, sidewalk gaps and defects, streetlights, and those total about $160 million total. And I'm available for any questions on deferred maintenance. I also have a very, a couple of very brief comments on, on, on capital infrastructure that we propose to construct in the next couple of years. So in addition to maintaining what we have, it's important that we are future ready for what's coming to us. And I wanted to highlight just, just a few of the many, many dozens of projects that our, that our teams are working on. So one of those is Sunrise Boulevard Phase Three. So that's going south of Douglas Road, all the way down to Kiefer. I'm sure you've seen on Sunrise Boulevard right now, we're working on Phase Two, which is the segment from Douglas, excuse me, from White Rock Road all the way down to Douglas. And so later this year, we'll continue on Phase Three, continuing south of there. White Rock Road, we have completed a couple of phases that go from Sunrise Boulevard and extend, extend all the way out to Ranch Cordova Parkway. We've been extremely successful. The team has in aggressively pursuing and obtaining grant funding that help us with this progress. And later this year, again, we'll be continuing those improvements for about another mile east of Ranch Cordova Parkway. This doesn't get us quite to, we still have about a mile left to get to the city county limit. And we're coordinating with the county for how, how to address the, the area out in the county. But this would get us a mile east of Ranch Cordova Parkway. So look forward to that coming later this year. We are also continuing with the design of Monier Circle Flood Control Basin. This is a critical improvement. In the heaviest rains, we see flooding on Sunrise Boulevard near Monier Circle. And this is a time when that critical infrastructure and connection is most vital to be open for movement of goods and services and emergency services. And so our team is working on the Monier Circle Flood Control Basin. And we also have a rendering, rendering here of the Zinfandel Bicycle and Pedestrian Overcrossing and Art Walk. This is another project. It's an over $30 million project. The team has been successful in obtaining over $23 million in grants that are really making this project possible. That'll include, I, I think what's going to be an iconic tight arch bridge that's going to cross through there and an art walk, including art pieces. This is truly going to be not only just a better way to connect across Freeway 50, but this is going to be a destination in its own right. I think it's going to be really spectacular. We're going to continue. Last year, we completed roadway rehabilitation on Matherfield Road Corridor. And we're going to be continuing to improve that corridor and enhance it. This project, the revitalization, we're going to continue with landscaping north of the freeway on, on the east side, upgrades to the, the walls and fences through there and enhancing the entryway into Cordova Town. We're going to continue to build out the Real Time Information Center and then enhance our proactive work on deferred maintenance as well as I, as I just detailed. I'm available for any questions.
I'm looking forward to seeing the John 316 guy up on the pedestrian over crossing.
I'm sorry, Councilmember, what was that?
Oh, nothing. I said I was looking forward to seeing the John 316 guy on the over crossing. Cause he's going to be up there for sure.
For sure.
Good old Michael.
College, any comments on this slide?
It's, my problem with all this stuff is he's, we, we pass these rules thinking that we would be able to afford it. And he says it's $2 million to the maintenance, but that's if inflation doesn't kick in. Where our city's growing leaps and bounds all the time. So we're paving new roads, stuff that's just growing. And that number is totally not going to fit in like two years. Cause it could be two years and, and like if the cost of concrete and everything else inflates, then it's like, okay, never mind. The two, it's seven. Never mind the seven, it's 15. The interesting part is Rancho was at 40, right? So with all the hard work that you and Linda and of course, you finding all the things and Cyrus had to do to go get all the money to bring it on the end to play the, to do this, we finally got it to 60. And I'll be interested to see, like, even if we were to give you the two to help you get to the 70, how long can we really stay there before it starts to do that dip? That's always that, it's, it's this consistent thing that we have to chase. But it's interesting that when you were, you're like, we're going to repave every road in Ranch Cordova, which has been done, correct? So every road in Ranch Cordova got touched, so all.
Not really.
We have, definitely proud to say that, that the city has gone through almost every single neighborhood and roadway in Rancho Cordova, but there are still some neighborhood, neighborhood roads that we quite, haven't quite gotten to. And there's still certainly some arterials that we, that we have not quite gotten to yet. Notably with arterials, Grand Line Road has been a huge, huge effort of, of, of the city and of yours, Councilmember, and as well as Sunrise, south of Kiefer and some other arterials. So there's still, still work to be done.
Is there ever not work to be done?
So when you talk about infusion of money though, Micah, do we pay off revenue neutrality in 2027?
I think 2028 is revenue neutrality. So I think.
Let's look at Kim.
Our, our last fiscal year, our last payment will be done June 30, 2028. After that, we're free.
We get lots of money.
How much money do we get?
12 million.
That can all go to roads.
So Albert, the two, 2 million versus 7 million, that's across the board, right? Maintain across the board, 2 million, great job, across the board, 7 million. Do we have an in-between where we prioritize, like Linda mentioned, if we have streetlights that we want to prioritize, like that failed roads? I know that was a $100 million budget. But you know, if we were to just focus on like the priority, is there another number? Or can, is it fit into the $2 million budget?
And this is, that really, that $2 million is just a few things. And the $7 million also, those are really addressing just pavement in order to address the broken sidewalk, in order to address the, the storm drain, which is also a really significant issue, is, is not included in there. And that $2 million is really just a stopgap.
Across the board, right? So the question is, what if we were to prioritize these low hanging fruit? That makes a big difference.
If that $2 million would hold us over on streets, if we wanted to address the, the streetlights and sidewalk gaps in addition to that, that would be, you know, that would be money on top of that. And it, and it would really depend on how quickly we wanted to address those $40 million. If we wanted to do it all at once, that would be 40 million. If we wanted to do that over the course of 10 years, you know, that would be another $4 million per year.
So, you know, I think, I think the, you know, kind of the question is, when we talk about the investment is across, we make strategic decisions on where we invest those dollars. So some of them will be in those kind of failed roads to improve the index. So I mean, as we talk about how do we spend that 9 million or plus million, we use a strategic approach of where that makes the most benefit to, to, to improve the gaps, I think is, is, I think.
Okay, that's my question. Yeah, it's not across.
We do that strategically as far as, you know, where the needs are of the kind of overall citywide.
The question was, was it going to be an option three? Because option one is here's what we're going to do across the board. Here's what we can do, a great job across the board. And option three would have been, here are our low hanging fruit that we can actually invest and make a difference. And here's that number or.
That $9 million is what we spend on road rehabilitation. We spend money in addition to that on, on fixing sidewalks and, and other deferred maintenance.
So do you only get your money out of Measure H and Measure R?
There are a number of sources. So Measure H and Measure R have been a huge part of.
Yeah.
Of fixing roads faster. Other important sources are Measure A. So that's the county wide, county wide half cent sales tax. Gas tax is, is also really important. And the statewide SB1 dollars is another important source.
Do we have anything out of our general fund going towards you or no?
Measure H and R.
Oh, that's it. Okay.
They're also genius at, at getting grants.
That's what I was just going to say. So if we give you more, is there a likelihood of also winning more in grants because our ability to match goes up?
That certainly helps. One of the things that we've, we've done strategically is packaged certain roadway improvements with arterials. And so adding, adding bicycle amenities or other improvements to our arterials has been very beneficial in getting grants that allow us to fix the, repair those arterials more quickly and add additional amenities that enhance those corridors. The, the challenge today is that there are very few grants available for neighborhood residential roads.
That's why Safe Routes to Schools is important because we really have these little neighborhood schools. And that's probably about the only way you can bring in extra money by creating a safe path for kids to get to school in their neighborhood.
Certainly additional funds would, would allow us to bring more to the table in pursuing grants, especially for major arterials improvements, which is a huge part of our challenge and among the most heavily traveled roads in not only Ranch Cordova, but in the case of Sunrise Boulevard, one of the most heavily traveled corridors in the entire county.
Yeah, when I checked CACOG, we had a huge push towards fix it first, which was reallocating more dollars rather than from building new capacity, basically shifted to try to fix some of the broken stuff. Cause there simply were no resources out there grant wise to deal with the existing broken infrastructure. We're kind of in a unique position able to do that, but most jurisdictions don't have, don't have anything.
Like the county.
Also, some of our roads we share with the county. You know, so Grant Line was mentioned, South Sunrise is mentioned, those are, those are 50/50, us and the county. So if they're not participating on their side, you know, we don't, we don't fund all of the, the improvement on both sides of the. you know, we don't, we don't fund all of the improvement on both sides of the road, right? So we have to have a partnership in order to pursue those?
That's correct. We share a number of roads, including Sunrise Boulevard, Grand Line Road, Bradshaw, Placerville, and portions of Folsom Boulevard, and probably a few others as well. And the county has been a great partner in getting together with us and strategizing how we can all prioritize the limited funding available to to improve the quality of those roads for all of the travelers.
Maybe we ought to make the argument towards annexation with the idea that they can get some of that stuff off their books. There's no revenue neutrality needed. You're taking all of our, you know, stuff that we haven't maintained properly, all of our deferred maintenance. Put that in the equation.
Up Sunrise is a good idea.
I wanted to say something about the Mather Field Road Corridor revitalization. You know, we're looking at a major investment in the Mills District, and that corridor has to be really looking good. Or that disorder thing is gonna cripple whatever we build at Mill Station, you know, in that district, so.
And it's important for the airshow.
Yeah.
It's the way people, the majority of people are getting to the airshow.
It's a challenging corridor, you know, with the abandoned rail along Mather Field Road there and old neighborhoods with old walls and old entrances and houses that probably shouldn't be fronting Mather Field Road but are still there. Businesses that are sort of under repair and other businesses are more challenging from a code enforcement perspective. There's a lot of, there's a lot of challenge around there. So I think, you know, pushing that infrastructure and maybe even looking at the infrastructure of the station itself, you know, and how well-maintained it is. Does it look glossy new, or does it look kind of beat-up, kind of maintained, or does it look bad? I don't think it looks bad now, but it probably does look a little beat up. We might need to think about how to improve that, that particular station, and maybe other stations, but particularly that one with the investment going on next door.
Can we go to the next topic?
Thank you, thank you very much. And those were just a couple options, and certainly mayor or council, if you wanted to see other options, that's something that we could bring back for your consideration as well. Thank you.
You know, Albert, we did have that difficulty with our with our drainage district. You know, we put something out there for voters, and it was a hundred percent increase in the fee, but it was a few dollars a month total that got voted down. I think people just, at that point, you know, last year, were not interested in any kind of fee increase of any kind anywhere, ever. But we also didn't really make the case, and we can't campaign as a city for it, so it's kind of a challenge. Do you foresee us doing that sort of a process again to try to get that funding under control, or get the adequate funding? Because the reality is, the county didn't increase that fee for whatever, since they created the district and this massive, you know, hundred million dollar liability is sitting there. We have to do our due diligence and try to make that district right. Do we have a strategy for that?
You have that absolutely right. The county formed that district in the mid-nineties without an inflator on that. So we've gone decades without inflating the revenue that comes in to support maintaining, maintaining those areas. We did go through that process, that was not successful. And we need to identify a route to get to a solution for that. We do have a shortfall of about four million dollars for our storm drain facilities, and the huge challenge with those storm drain facilities is that they can be out of sight, out of mind. And the city did do, just a few years ago, a system-wide evaluation, so that we were able to get a really good idea of the the condition of our infrastructure and identifying a huge need that needs to be addressed. As I mentioned, we have about a four million dollar shortfall to address that infrastructure. We have stemmed the tide on new developments that come into a city. We have a separate district that does have an inflator on it, and as the, as people move into those subdivisions, we do expect that they will be self-sustaining for those newer, newer areas. But we have a huge problem that needs to be addressed before it gets worse in existing areas.
So I think we just spend all of revenue neutrality. Those two items combined, pretty much, that's it. Thank you, Albert. That was great.
All right, moving on to the next focus area, which is lead community growth and innovation. And in this category, some of the priority projects for the next two-year budget cycle will be completing the general plan update, which is currently underway. Implement the Economic Development Strategic Plan, and some of the things that staff will be pursuing under that will be, you know, Office Park of the Future, Entrepreneurial Ecosystem, Talent Pipeline Management, Embark and Small Business AI Support. We'll also be continuing, staff will be continuing to focus on what we're calling our gateway developments, both the West Borough and Magado, and trying to continue to move those projects forward. And then finally, catalyst project opportunities. These are really opportunities that come to us maybe from the private sector and requires some staff time to collaborate. And then one of those ideas is the AI Ecosphere or Tech Hub concept, and then, you know, there's always other opportunities that do get pursued when the opportunity presents itself. I'll stop there for any feedback or any questions on that category.
So I'll tell you why this is critical, besides the fact that it's the only thing that me and Siri can actually talk to well. It happens to be one of the few things that actually will generate revenue for the city. The other way to look at these problems that we're actually getting ready to have in need of roads and fixes, how does the city make more money? You know, the city makes more money by bringing really cool businesses into the city and helping them to succeed, which generates more tax revenue for us and helps us keep growing. And that's why I think Ranch Cordova is different from every other city, is that we actually promote businesses and try to drive them in here and realize that if we can bring more revenue in, then the road, nine million dollars, the road means nothing if you can generate twenty million dollars. I don't see why with AI and AI technologies that we're about to push into the city, why we can't take the hundred and twenty-five, hundred and thirty million dollar budget and double it in a very short amount of time with the businesses that we bring into the city. As long as the workforce is there and they're engaged in the community, there's no reason why we can't grow that. But this is the, this happens to be one of the few industries that can pop and bring that kind of revenue into our city. So that's why we need to focus on not only just, not just technology, but just business in general with the talent pipeline and the Embark program, is that we have to find a way to use these office parks, these businesses, to drive business in here so that we can afford to make share we get to the eighty percentile, because we're not gonna do that with just Measure H, Measure R. We're gonna do that by growing the overall revenues of the city. That's what I think.
The small business AI support, is that part of the TPM?
No, it's not part of the TPM, it's a separate project, and it's part of our contract with the Chamber and and moving forward, their work and their program work is a part of that contract. It's a separate program.
Are we investing in that separate from TPM?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
All right, moving on to the next focus area, create vibrant community and cultural places. So some of the things that we'll be working on in this area will be kind of embarking on an update or a new arts strategic plan. There's, was talk at the January twenty-eighth work session about, you know, looking at creating community hubs and nodes. And so some of the ideas circling our neighborhood pop-ups and kind of in conjunction with Good Neighborhood Days, as well as a number of the legacy projects that are currently underway that I'm gonna talk about in just a minute. And then also making sure that we continue to work closely and leverage our community partners and assets, including Cordova Community Council, the Children's Museum, MAC, and Soilborne Farms. So those are some of the efforts in that category. But I do want to kind of move through the update on the legacy projects as well, which are part of this category. And just wanted to get council feedback on a handful of these, or just provide updates. So the first, this is a project, the community theater project that we started discussion about a couple weeks ago at the work session, but didn't quite have sufficient time to get into it and get council feedback. The city has been working, staff have been working with initially Rise Up Theater on pursuing kind of a small community arts venue. And originally, a location on Olson was identified, that did not work out. Staff have since identified a location at the corner of Zinfandel and Folsom Boulevard, which used to, formerly was a gym. So large space with zoning that allows for this type of use. The large space not only allows for the build-out of a small performing arts theater, but also rehearsal space, meeting rooms, and storage, which we've heard is a big concern of many of our performing arts partners in the community, is the need for storage, storage onsite preferably. So staff has identified this site. It also presents an economic kind of revitalization opportunity for this shopping center and also has potential for a meeting space for veterans, which I know we've been discussing and talking about for years. So this is a potential location that could occur. So one of the ideas would be, the city, if there's an interest in continuing to pursue this project, that the city could take on somewhat of a lead role in negotiating a lease agreement for this particular site and ensuring that the necessary TI's tenant improvements get completed, and then conducting a request for qualifications from some of our performing arts groups in the community to operate and program the space. That would be the kind of recommended approach.
So my biggest issue is the landlord. Period.
Exclamation point. We may need to keep looking.
I think the potential bang for the buck for this use is interesting to us. It seems like the next step in our strategy towards the arts in that we don't really have that community theater space. And when we looked at this before, and Kurt and Rise Up Theater, I think, brought it to us originally, this whole concept that you could take an existing place and kind of flip it. The cost of that is remarkably low compared to other things we would consider. You know, like almost an order of magnitude less than other things we would consider, like ten times less. So it makes sense to me that I would be willing to spend that kind of money to to see how much of this activity we could generate in the community, because this is nightlife, it's quality life, it's something for our residents to do, potentially something for our kids to do. And putting it together, it's the next step in our arts strategy to create more, you know, activity and live theater. So I'm really a fan of this. I do think, though, we also have a discussion going on with the community council about what their space is, and of course, we've got the Mills District facility. We need to right-size and be sure we're, we're like meeting all the needs. But I wouldn't hesitate from saying, you know, you need two sites or three sites to accomplish it. That wouldn't surprise me. And we've got other stuff hanging out there, you know, like the veterans, which we've been wanting to do something about. And potentially, you could do something here on the community side of a large amount of space, right? There's a lot of, there's a lot of other opportunity. I guess the landlord is a challenge, but landlords are kind of always challenges at some level, right? But I'm really, I'm really excited about this, this opportunity.
Well, at least there's a lot of parking.
Yeah, in long term, I don't know. Does this ever survive as retail again? I don't know if we're ever.
Where is this?
Zinfandel and Folsom.
This is ninety-nine cent store.
This is, this maybe becomes.
Is this by the old boiling crab?
Yeah.
Oh, over there.
This maybe becomes like residential long-term.
Can we get rid of the landlord?
Maybe it's the new.
Just joking at him, I apologize.
Maybe it's the new, you know, Children's Museum, library spot, I don't know.
The only thing it has going for it is space, parking, and light rail.
Also, the building use, it's already being a gym and occupancy is important for these types of uses, so from a sense of finding the right spot for a use like this, and the required tenant improvements and different things to convert. And so it already being kind of an assembly use actually is what drives a lot of that conversation as well. And I think regardless, you know, kind of, I think on this, it's, this particular location is, you know, is an opportunity. But I think it's the approach that we're talking about, which is, you know, taking the lead and driving this conversation from a from a staff team standpoint, and then kind of finding those different opportunities as we, as we drive that further conversation around operations. But I think in order to get this done, it's gonna take us taking a little bit more of a stronger role in pushing kind of these conversations and these negotiations and whatever they might be in it, and really just seeing if the council's interested in pursuing a, I don't wanna call it a temporary, but a community theater-type project in the short term over this next cycle to pursue and attract.
So this is the one.
I understand. The biggest downside, I mean, the other big downside is the bizarre access. And the fact that this, this stretch of Zinfandel is the most impacted period, which is why we discourage Dutch Bros from going in there on the east side of the street. When you consider the traffic weaving around the, I mean, number one, there's not a really good way to get there off of Olson. You gotta go behind the gas station and drive up between the big store and Chipotle. Because if you're trying to get there, like if you're coming southbound on Zinfandel, that's fine. But if you're going northbound on Zinfandel, trying to get into there is a nightmare. And, and yeah, it might have been an assembly use, which is a good thing. But you know, in twenty-six thousand square feet, what's the occupancy load? My goodness. And how do they get there? They're not gonna take the train. Especially not if it's local.
Well, but we do want to, also, we want to clean up. We're also trying, with all this stuff, we're trying to clean up Folsom Boulevard, I'm sorry, revitalize Folsom Boulevard. So we bought it for a little bit, made it look nicer, and then let someone else take it, where we lost nothing, but it cleaned up that space. It's still a good thing. Because honestly, there's four or five buildings along Folsom Boulevard that are not, that are open, that would make great theater art pop-up materials. And that's how Austin, Texas did it. They found broken-down buildings that don't have a lot of love, and they put a theater or an arts facility or a secondary MAC, and all of a sudden, it became kind of a hipster kind of feel to it. And they even put in housing there, which I don't think we can just stick housing in the building. But can we do that? Can I do that? No? Okay, just checking. But.
This does have a lot of parking. And the previous spot they were looking at, I think that was one of the downsides we were gonna have to overlook or shrug our shoulders about and just say, I hope it works out. But there's no lack of parking here. And the space is pretty cheap. The, remember, the theater use here, as I understand, the business model is ninety-nine attendees or less. Because if they tip to a hundred, it's a whole different level of like fee and how you have to compensate the actors and the play that you're doing and the whole thing, so.
Yeah, I think there's actually some opportunity there beyond that. I think that was kind of a threshold put on by the past operator, that I think there are other opportunities for different kinds of sizes and theaters as well in our conversations with other theater groups.
And if you think about what the film office was able to do, just in that empty office space, basically, the black box, sort of, that they created in there. It was, it was pretty cool what they were doing, but I think you've got more height here and more square footage to play with. You could probably design something a lot better.
Sure wish we were doing numbers with a whiteboard right now, so I could start. You know what I'm saying? Like, it's great, like, these are great ideas, but I'm like, okay, so safety, okay, cool, roads, cool entertainment, all right. This one's gonna generate money, this is gonna generate some money, this is gonna lose us money. All right, you have thirty dollars left. So that gets us a Coke and a smile.
Well, I think at this point, we're asking for interest. We'll bring back those numbers in the whiteboard. Hopefully, we don't get into that kind of detail for the whiteboard, but I think at least it gives us the opportunity to bring back the numbers for these different pieces.
We already have fifteen million in the bank for our library, right?
I think that's the next slide, but, or two, so. Not fifteen.
It's not fifteen, but yeah, it's the next slide. Do we?
Yes, keep it.
But I'm here in direction kind of to pursue this option.
I wanna see.
It may not be this particular option, but look at options, including this, to bring back for discussion.
What we're saying is, we need a theater space. If it's not this one, then definitely a theater space with. Is the Viva Market still open?
Yeah.
Okay, because I heard that was closing. All right, keep it going. Here we are, my library. How much do we have in the bank for this?
We have just over seven million. Uh, we have just over seven million dollars that has been earned for community facilities, impact fees specific to the library. So that, and that is just for the library. It doesn't mean that additional other dollars could be put towards a future library. But that, you know, that is part of the question that we wanted to pose to the council this evening is we had a workshop on this topic about a year ago discussed, you know, the interest and the need. The current existing library in Rancho Cordova is, you know.
Is not existent.
Is.
Doesn't exist. That would be the right thing to say. Lives in the county. But no, but I want to, uh, this is what we were talking about is a pop up library. So a pop up like kids library for Anatolia and then even a cool seniors library because there is some pretty decent sized spaces in Cat Village that seniors could walk up to and get their whole thing. And then we'd have like this nice kind of, you could jump between the three until we find the permanent home, which is going to be in the Cordova Community Council's brand new building where they have the spy. Hey, hey, Shelley, where we have our brand new library, but something that, what, what? That's a great idea. Like someplace that would be there forever, but I like the idea of like the interim, like how much would it cost to retrofit? Like one of those buildings so that we could rent books like less than probably three hundred thousand to do that, to get it to the point where we could have the books. And as long as, as long as our library partners are willing to actually come and fulfill it with a librarian, I mean, that would be great. Especially for little kids, a little, I mean, we are so baby heavy in Anatolia right now. So baby heavy. And then it, and then the people could walk the, you know, Cat Village just drives the walking thing in. So we could really have like a really nice senior kind of community there and night next to Starbucks.
Actually, there are libraries, like Carmel, Indiana, where Starbucks has an outlet inside.
Can we get the, let's see, that's a, no, it's a Wingstop. We gotta leave that alone. That's delicious. What do you think, Joe? You're on the library board.
Yeah, I know with this great power you bestowed upon me.
And you joined the, and I'm really proud of you for joining the 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 financial committee too, just like I had to. I appreciate you.
Uh, nothing, no, totally great idea. It's just, it's whatever it is, it's probably going to be more books. Or sorry, more services and activities than books. It's like you you hear jokes about kids on their iPads. It's like, no boomers are on their iPads all day and they don't even read books anymore. And it's all just like getting all the stuff. So yeah, totally agree with it, although, you know, I don't know if books are the focus, but.
I read my books on my iPad, so.
Exactly.
Actually, it's the library.
He's not a boomer, though. She's a Gen Xer.
But it's the library of things.
Right.
All right. And not only that, but all of our libraries, aside from maybe Folsom are all interconnected. So if you, if you want to read something that you read about in the paper today, yesterday, Monday, Friday, whatever it was, and you want to check that out, then you go online, you tell them and they send it to your branch and you can go pick it up there. You could even rent a sewing machine or a weed whacker, whatever.
What is the sewing machine you speak of?
What? He's, he's just kidding. But right, there's also, you can also rent CDs. I don't know how you play the CDs anymore. You do? You can, you can.
The DVD.
Yeah.
That way you can watch like Demolition Man and quality films like Bad Boys Two.
There's few people that still own a DVD and a CD player. Yes, we can do that as well. Okay.
So I just, you know, we want to clarify, just like spending that seven million or looking at options for doing a temporary or pop up library in the kind of south area, well, generally central to the south area of the city is something that you're interested in us bringing back some options for. And having conversations with the library district about actually operating the facility if we were to open it.
And we have Joe there now.
So he's got it covered.
He's got it covered. Make it happen. But but I don't want just one, Micah. I really would like to do two. And I don't think we need to spend all eight hundred thousand. I think you're talking like maybe eight hundred, eight, eight million. I think you're talking probably a max, probably two to three million on both.
I think we will have to look at those numbers and see what we can come up with for options.
I'm a great architect. I know a guy that does the planning. He works here and plan checking, works here.
Nope, sounds good.
All right, continuing to move the conversation along, just again, an update on mineshaft and what was mentioned at the workshop a couple of weeks ago, that the Cordova Community Council has decided not to pursue the relocation and expansion of the current existing mineshaft building. Given that the interchange is most likely not going to be underway in the next, you know, two to three years, it is conceivable that that mineshaft building could continue to be used for the time being for some of the events and would probably require a few facility safety improvements to kind of keep it operational during that timeframe. So that is something that staff is in discussions with CCC about. And continuing to work towards evaluating kind of as all these different legacy projects are considered and move forward and also what those needs of the CCC and what they're looking at, kind of coordinating together on kind of the next phase of what this project looks like.
Sounds good. I found, I found the building I want you guys to get. Just so you know, like, it's only like two and a half million and it has this cool overhang. It's in the middle of Rancho Cordova. Can't say the name because I don't want the price to go up.
Okay, moving on to the next project across the parking lot, our children's museum is another facility project that we're considering in the next two years and some of the facility enhancements that have been in discussion that we would like to kind of work with the children's museum to deliver would be improvements to the interior lobby. And this would allow for improved connectivity between, you know, the original side that the children's museum was housed on and then the side that they later took over when McKesson vacated that. So it's still a little bit disjointed. So trying to better improve that connectivity. And then considering some exterior facade improvements to the building, adding color and liveliness. You know, a lot of folks, what we hear, folks that come to the children's museum sometimes mistake that that is the children's museum because it looks just like another office building in City Hall Parking Lot. So trying to call attention to the children's museum. Also looking to create an a gated outdoor space that would allow for some expansion of the play area potentially, as well as space that could be utilized, benches and so on, that could be utilized for part, parties and other events and allow them to continue to expand and deliver services that are in demand. So those are some of the things that we're considering in the next two year cycle.
So the the leadership class is talking about building a seating wall.
Yes. So that would be kind of, that would, if, that would be done before, potentially before the rest of this. But something that would be kind of incorporated into this overall improvement project. Okay. Any other comments on that one? All right then. So moving on to our final category this evening, promote organizational excellence. So kind of the themes in this category include capacity building within city to meet current and future demands. There will be City Hall facility improvements with Suite two thirty upstairs where Cordova Parks and Recreation Department used to be. And so, and that would then require Public Works moving and then our folks over at RCNC moving over to City Hall and kind of that vision of a one stop City Hall. And then continuing commitment to maintaining our culture and values and also continuing to invest in data driven tools. And as I mentioned at the start of the presentation, creating those KPIs and making those kind of consistent across the organization. Anything on this category?
None for me.
All right. So final topic this evening that I want to touch on is kind of going back to the discussion we had about infrastructure and basically some of the things that we're considering in order to be able to start moving some additional dollars towards infrastructure. So looking with the Measure H allocation to increase that public works infrastructure allocation in the coming two year cycle and with a reduction, a slight reduction in the legacy project allocation in order to accomplish that. And I'm going to get into the real numbers of what that impact is in just a slide here, another slide after this. And then for Measure R, kind of a similar, kind of again, with a focus on continuing to increase the amount of dollars put towards public works and infrastructure and some of the areas that we're looking to reduce to make that work would be within community and economic development and the affordable housing and homelessness allocation. And this next slide kind of will show in actual, we are talking numbers now, so I lied. We did have one more slide with numbers on it.
Excellent. Let's break down each number into the infinitum. I'm glad we talked about this. I got a whole chart. So tax revenue is showing that it's slowing down. Tax revenue has plateaued affecting the general fund and the CIF community fund. The city lease contract cost stabilizing allow the allocation of funds. Should I just keep going? I just want you to know, this is how powerful AI is. It did this in ten minutes.
That's the chat GPT report on the budget.
It's amazing. I could just, I sound. Clearly, the major investments in infrastructure, public safety, community growth and economic development are breakdown. Let's go ahead and talk about each one and line item, but I'll save this for when we're ready. But I, I think it's amazing how we can take technology, flip it and start to fill in some of the the loopholes or the stuff we're missing as we talk about, especially like things like this. We should be able to find ways with technology to fill in and be able to stretch our money even farther. That's the whole power. Being able, because it's hard to find good people. Well, with good technology, we should be able to make these people be able to do more things at a faster rate. Go ahead.
All right. So what we're doing on this slide, what is being proposed for consideration in order to increase the allocation to public works infrastructure with an increase in both H and R of in totality, it would be an increase of two point four million dollars for the next, each year of the next two year cycle for public works infrastructure. And that would be funded by decreasing the community and economic development by eight hundred thousand dollars. And we feel like in in discussion with the economic development team that they can continue to deliver the programs and initiatives that they have envisioned for the next two year cycle. A portion of those dollars has kind of been set aside for what I would call Economic Development Opportunity Fund. So we have about two and a half million dollars that we can set aside in our legacy fund that would be available to fund economic development related opportunities as they arise. And so that would allow us to not necessarily allocate those dollars on an annual basis that then maybe potentially don't get used and instead just kind of keep that as a holding pot for those potential projects. The other category that we're recommending a slight reduction in is affordable housing and homelessness. That would be a decrease of about six hundred thousand dollars. And the rationale for that is that now our Affordable Housing Impact Fee Fund is actually generating revenues to fund affordable housing projects and has actually accumulated a pretty healthy balance. And is available to fund projects in that category. So we don't, we think we can still deliver projects while reducing the allocation here. And then finally, the legacy project allocation. Overall, a decrease across both Measure H and Measure R in total of about a million dollars a year for legacy projects, but that still allows for about three million dollars a year set aside for those legacy projects that we just talked about. So we feel like that is a sufficient number to kind of continue to deliver those projects. So interested in a reaction or thoughts on this proposed allocation.
So apparently affordable housing homelessness does not include expanding the hot team to seven days a week.
A portion of the hot team is funded from this category, but a more significant portion is funded out of the general fund because it includes PD contract and so forth. So it's a combination.
What about the other big bucket, Kim? The community grants. Can't you shave off a few percentage points there?
Yes, so let's look at that. Because in the end, like economic development actually generates revenue. That's the one thing I don't like shrinking something that I know that's going to break money because what we need is more money in the door so we can have more money to be able to spread to the things we're working on. And I don't want to cut in certain areas. I'd rather look at that and look at everything as a whole, holistically, as we go through this. The other thing is, and I think this is the right time to bring this up, but I know one of our partners is here, Fire, thank you for showing up today, has asked to work with Micah to get an ask of what they're looking for. They're concerned about safety and I know we have a big, one of the, I think it was Measure R was created for public safety. No, yeah, Measure H was a safety thing. And so they're looking at some possible need. And I would just like to know what that is. So I'd like you to go work with them to figure out what they actually are looking for.
So I think there was a couple of things that, you know, my conversations were pretty specific as far as a squad ask and some additional work. And so I think before I would, you know, have those conversations with Metro Fire about having what other opportunities there are exist with adding services on our end to basically pay for additional Metro Fire services. Would want that direction from all of you to go and take that conversation to the administration over there and see what the, what that looks like. Obviously, whatever we do there would have to come from somewhere else in these line items. And so generally, I think, would want that pretty clear direction from from you as a board or you as a council to to give me that direction to to go have those conversations.
Fair point. Do you need, do you need a motion to for this?
I think he just needs three of us.
I need three of you to kind of give me.
Not for the Metro Fire, I mean, for this.
Oh, for this.
No, I don't need a motion. I just wanted to get kind of feedback on whether kind of these changes are something that the council would be supportive of.
And and I think just to highlight on this sheet too, is we do have an Economic Development Opportunity Fund, as can mention, that does have some dollars set aside in it that I think gives us the opportunity to take advantage of the investment side of of revenue creation. And so I know it looks, it's a reduction here, but we do have a pretty healthy set aside already for for an Economic Development Opportunity Fund that we can take advantage of some current and future conversations. So I don't think, I won't want to call that a complete disinvestment of of kind of the economic development activities, but we do have some set aside from previous years for that, for that work.
And we just made a record big investment in our chamber as a partner.
Right.
This still accommodates that.
Correct. So my, my question is also is, is, this is our budget for the city of Rancho Cordova. These are two large line items in the budget, correct? So when do we see the whole thing so we can move, so I can move, because you're saying move this up and that down and this up. But what if there's something over here that I want to get rid of or take from there to put here to move this sideways? And and these are fine. I just, I haven't, when I ingest it, I'm like, well, what if I do, there's something else over here I can get rid of to make this better. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah. So the tonight, this particular slide and recommendation is just focused on Community Enhancement Investment Fund because we have just started conversations on sort of the bigger, you know, budget discussion with the general fund and, you know, aren't at a point where we have numbers quite to this point yet. So that will be forthcoming.
Okay, can we, can we, when we have that meeting, can we do it at, not at council, so I can have a whiteboard? So I could, I mean, I'm being serious about this, so I can really start looking at numbers and drawing stuff and be like, what if we take a million off of this and we put it over here?
Subcommittee for that? That way you can whiteboard and then.
No, I want you all here when I'm whiteboarding so I can take all the time. I don't mind sub.
No, I, I mean, because this, if this does take time, so maybe.
I mean, I don't, I, you know, from my perspective, I wouldn't, as for a decision as big as the budget, I wouldn't actually recommend a subcommittee approach, just because it is the, one of the biggest things that we do and and it should be kind of a whole council conversation about what the budget is.
There's a difference between a conversation with the output and then discussing it like we're doing now versus going into the weeds and you know, crossing the Ts and dotting the Is and doing the math and mathing the math.
I would love the chance to actually do the mathy math. So if we could, like, I don't mind, so at least I can be prepared when I come to it. So I'm not flushing it all out here with you guys. Because if it's like, okay, well, it's this line item, if we take from this line item, we can take care of not losing anything in economic, economic development over here or this to get through to the affordable housing because I'm trying to figure out which line items in the affordable housing that actually pays for. And the legacy allocation project, does that now take away from the chance of David building the play center? Because then that actually does generate revenue, which then would go back in. So would this number then go down? You know, those kind of things. Just, it's the biggest thing we get to do. It's the next two years budget and it's my last chance to put a stamp on helping our city go in the right direction.
So colleagues, do you think we should bring this, like the deeper discussion here or have another workshop?
You could do, you could do a work study or a work session, I think, and get into more details and have a whiteboard. You get to draw on it.
There's always been. It's a matter who gets the markers.
Yeah, there's always been a little, you know, tug of war, you know, over a generation now. Being in city leadership between the city. Being in city leadership between the city staff saying, oh, I can craft, I think these are Ted Gable's words, the perfect budget and you guys just need to adopt it. Versus us saying, well, what were the trade-offs that went into deciding that was the perfect budget? Right? That's sort of the, the yin and the yang of it.
And we used to do workshops.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We used to do a whole afternoon workshop. For numbers people.
So, I mean, I think if, if you don't mind, setting aside an afternoon, we would probably ask or say that, you know, to get into that kind of detail, I would recommend a work session, an added work session to the already possibly numbers.
This is important enough that we should all dig in and actually look. Because when we say we dropped something, I'm like, what did you drop? Like, what, what's the real, like, what happened to, you know? And then it's like, I like the idea of giving $3 million to roads. Is that somewhere in the middle? Well, how do I get some of the lights, but not all the lights? You know, that kind of thing. Like, okay, Albert, like, if I gave you $500,000, how many new lights do I get throughout Rancho Cordova? And where are the best areas to make the biggest bang for the buck? And, you know, what other partners are we bringing along as we do this thing? And, you know, that kind of thing.
So is, is the question today, it looks like we're on alignment on moving the numbers this way and that way. So up for public works is yes.
Can I get?
If we want to do it, go ahead.
Can we get at least a couple of people to, so we can at least find out what FIRE is looking for?
Yeah, sure. Do you have to make a motion?
No, I just need one more person to say yes.
Yes.
No, I don't think the, the chief isn't here. So these are the, these are the. I don't know which. Representatives. I was gonna say, I don't know what it is. I was gonna say battalion, I can't see your badge.
Yeah, there is a VC here.
Okay.
Okay.
But I will say, I mean, I could tell you order of magnitude, it was one to $2 million worth of asks that goes out the, the Metro FIRE operationally, for, per year.
So your motion is to ask what they want?
Yeah, it's time now we go, I just want to see what it would look like on our, on all our numbers as we're getting ready for this two-year budget. I need some, some data back. Can I get the data back? So at least we can discuss it logically.
What, what do we need now?
I, I think I need a, a third yes to go and actually have that conversation or not and pursue.
Just about FIRE?
Just about FIRE. That a $1 to $2 million to pursue a conversation with Metro FIRE about what operation they need to expand.
Yeah, so that's it. She said, yes, she's go have some discussion.
And so what we'd bring back for our future conversation is what proposals they would have to add to our.
Yes.
Services.
And there's actually a couple of things that, that I was hoping to get. One was a, a FIRE arsonist investigator, because we have quite a few of those. And I would like to see, and then they would actually tie in with our police budget, which means would that reduce the cost in the police budget? Because FIRE would then pick up the arsonist. And so those are those things we could talk about at the whiteboard level.
Okay. So you have direction on this slide, Kim. We need to dig deeper. You know, a lot whiteboarded.
I'm really looking forward to that future whiteboard conversation.
Yeah, you got two people who do two plus two.
I'm gonna use AI.
I think we'll give you each a whiteboard and then.
And, and you can send us a spreadsheet of the breakdown before the workshop so then we can, you know.
So I, I will say, I mean, when we bring back this conversation, it will be a, you know, complete budget with lots of depth and, and information and numbers. So I think it's, it's, may not all fit on a whiteboard, but I think we can try to craft that and to have a detailed conversation around the whole budget as a workshop environment as we can bring back.
And I would offer just a, a Brown Act reminder to do your brainstorming in the meeting, not outside of it. If you talk with more than one of your colleagues about this, you would be engaging in a serial Brown Act meeting. If you talk about these sorts of numbers outside of the meeting, you're going to come back. So.
Right.
You shouldn't develop a consensus about what these trade-offs would be outside of that conversation.
Yes, we're still commenting on this one. Per Vice Mayor's direction, we're going to move on to public comment. Do we have public comment for this, Stacy?
We do. Helen Whalen-Bishaw. You'll have up to three minutes.
Two questions. Why are we supporting a museum that has the word Sacramento in it and it's not a Rancho Cordova? Because for years I thought Sacramento was supporting it. Now I see Rancho is going to be giving money over to it. Another thing, the shopping center, I think makes an excellent idea for the theater. Reason being is it has access for big rigs in the back. It's on the same side of the street as the light rail. It has high ceilings. It used to be a fitness center, which means plumbing has been upgraded. There's more than small bathrooms. You probably had showers in there. So there's a lot of pluses with that. And you have restaurants across the street. You have Starbucks there. I think the city needs to really consider that because putting it at Mills Crossing, wherever we're calling that location, isn't really feasible because you pay for royalties based on the number of seats of capacity, whether you're going to fill the hall, rent out, sell all the seats or not. And 100 seats will easily fit in there. Staging, for lighting, you have high ceilings. There shouldn't really be an issue. It would be a better location than at Mills Station Crossing because we're trying to dream big for that little piece of land. And it's not feasible and you have plenty of parking there. And it's being used at a time when the traffic is lower. It's not during the day with all the commuter traffic. It's in the evening. So it would revitalize that part of the community for a revenue and use, better use of that shopping area, I believe. Thank you.
That's all the public comment we have.
Colleagues, any more comments on this presentation?
Want to make sure, we, we feel comfortable where we're at, Kim?
Thank you, Kim.
Whiteboard.
Whiteboard. Whiteboard and math, the two key areas. Agenda item 16.2, I'm going to ask the city collector, please announce the subject.
Communications update.
Really? That's it?
Yes.
Communications team is doing a great job.
We promise we won't have too many numbers. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. Maria Chacon, Communications and Public Affairs Director. Our team is happy to present our communications update this evening. There we go. This evening's update will provide you with some background on our city team's approach to communications. Data from 2024, what's new in 2025 and some of our bigger proactive efforts. One note, we are missing a team member this evening, Danielle Hale. She is, for whatever reason, chose to go on vacation instead of present. So we hope she's having a great time wherever she is.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I'm Lauren Burke, Communications Officer. Before we begin our presentation, we thought we would begin with a quick recap of some highlights from the past year. Enjoy.
Okay, turning to our communications approach. Our North Star is to deliver strategic proactive communications for our residents and businesses. This approach requires intentionality, focus, and of course, metrics. Our goals as we approach communications challenges are to be strategic. That means ensuring that the campaigns and projects ladder up to the city's strategic goals. And I'll talk a little bit more about that later. Purposeful, and that means we develop tactics based on our data and insights, but also on qualitative measures. Data-driven, we measure everything focusing on what's working and making sure changes when it doesn't. Future-forward, we ask ourselves, how does our work shape Rancho Cordova? How is what we're doing moving our city forward? And this helps ground our work in what's important for the community. In order to deliver on these goals and maximize proactivity, we do work from a strategic communications plan and quarterly work plans. The quarterly work plans are broken down into three areas and we'll show you that in a few minutes. We can't anticipate everything that comes our way, obviously. So we do allow for some capacity to handle reactive communications. This is media inquiries and things like that, as well as crisis communications and other types of community issues. Since we have a new member on the council, we created this slide just for you, Councilmember Little. We wanted to take just a moment to let you know about our in-house capabilities. We are an integrated communications and marketing team. We have broad capabilities, but we also have some specialties, which you'll see on this wheel here. Some of these are through consultants that we work with. We do have an in-house team of four, as well as four consultants for graphic design, public safety, social media, photography and some digital content. In addition, we have scientific research capabilities through two consultants that we have, as well as a contract for news monitoring. We know you're very interested in KPIs and we're pleased to have baseline data that dates back to 2016. We do measure just about everything that we do in the communications and marketing realm. And as I mentioned, we also field a number of statistically valid surveys on an annual basis. Last year, we reported 18 months of data and this presentation will show you year-over-year data. And now I'd like to hand it over to the team to review that 2024 data, talk a little bit about what the data are telling us and how we performed year-over-year.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I'm Samantha Mott, Senior Communications Officer. Overall, media relations experienced a 68% growth in positive media coverage in 2024, which is a significant increase from 2023. This increase reflects our team being fully staffed in 2024. Tracking media engagement and coverage is crucial for understanding our public reach. Media coverage plays a vital role in shaping public perception for both our community and regionally. We saw year-over-year growth in media coverage and key story placement. In 2024, our top performing media stories focused on events, Fourth of July and the California Capitol Air Show, National League of Cities Summer Meeting, Economic Development and New Business Openings. Looking forward to 2025, we'll continue to build strong media relations, proactively sharing positive stories and increased focus on storytelling, highlighting the impact of city programs on residents' daily lives. This chart illustrates the growth across the city's social media channels, including Facebook, X, formerly known as Twitter, Instagram, Nextdoor and LinkedIn. Overall, we experienced 12% growth across these channels in 2024. Each social media channel is unique and has a slightly different audience. To ensure that we're delivering our audiences with the content that they are interested in, our team meets weekly to review an editorial calendar to plan content for the city and RCPD channels, which I'll discuss in a minute. This chart illustrates the growth, the growth across RCPD's social media channels, including Facebook, X, Instagram and Nextdoor. Overall, RCPD channels experienced an 8% growth in followers, which is slightly down from recent years. However, this channel was not fully staffed for the first six months of 2024. We now work with a social media consultant, Ian Carver, who is a retired RCPD Operations Commander. We'd also like to talk about our digital e-newsletters. Rancho Cordova News in the city's monthly e-newsletter and Rancho Cordova Events, the city's bimonthly events e-newsletter. Rancho Cordova News experienced a 13% growth in subscribers in 2024, which comes on top of the incredible growth the last two years of 44% and 55%. Since fiscal year 2122, we've almost doubled our subscriber count. The continued growth of RC News can be attributed to things such as promoting the newsletters through our social media channels and at events. We track detailed data about our newsletters, including our open rate, which is the number of people who opened the email once it was sent to them. For Rancho Cordova News, the average opens grew this year by nearly 7%, showing our residents are taking the time to digest the news in these emails. Our open rates for both newsletters average around 49%, which is 12% above the industry average open rate. We analyze our newsletter data and we can see where our readers are clicking and what they're reading. From the data, we can see that readers are most interested in new and coming businesses, public works projects and key current events. Rancho Cordova Events also experienced a 16% growth over the past year on top of the 40% growth in our last report and a 56% growth in fiscal year 2122. This again led to nearly doubling our subscribers and average opens since fiscal year 2122. Average opens grew nearly 10% as well compared to our last report to you. Again, our average open, our open rate averages around 12% above the industry average open rate. On Rancho Cordova Events, we work with a consultant, Eric Loughlin, to add events to our website and the newsletter bimonthly. Now we are transitioning to our two websites, one for the city and one for RCPD. Last year, RCPD's website was visited about 49,000 times, which is almost identical to the previous year. For context, a website visitor is essentially the number of clicks on our website or a specific page. On the city's website, we received 282,701 visits in 2024, which is nearly identical to the number of visits we received in 2023. With a steady number of visitors to our website each month, the city website continues to act as an integral source to our community. As you know, our website is a one-stop shop full of information for residents, business owners and others looking to find information on Rancho Cordova. With nearly 283,000 webpage clicks, here are the top 10 most visited pages on the city's website. The homepage led in visits, followed by residential solid waste services and Rancho Cordova online. New to the top 10 this year, the Apply for a Job webpage and our department's webpage. On this slide, you will see a sampling of the various publications that our team produces. This metric is one that our team began tracking in 2023 and our team produced 138 publications this year, surpassing last year's number of 101. That averages out to almost two publications a day. These publications include things like flyers for community bike rides, Good Neighbor Days, vaccine clinics and other events and campaigns. They also include program brochures, postcards, placemaking signs and many more. All publications are also available on our website. We also created 12 print and digital paid advertisements this year and these ads are featured in sources such as the Business Journal, Comstock, The Grapevine, social media advertising and more. In 2024, we redefined how we approach community outreach. This is different from neighborhood engagement, which is focused on building community leaders and growing strong neighborhoods. Community outreach is filling in the information gap for critical issues facing, facing our community. This ensures that residents are informed and have opportunities to participate in city initiatives. By being more strategic in our community outreach, we make sure that residents receive timely and accurate information about the issues that impact them most. In 2024, we hosted and supported several major outreach efforts. several major outreach efforts, including General Plan Update Community Workshop, Active Transportation Plan Community Pop-Ups, and Mills Crossing Outreach, providing updates and collecting feedback on this major development. These efforts ensure that city planning and projects reflect the needs and priorities of our residents. They also build trust and transparency between the city and the community.
So you've heard a little bit about the data. Last year, we shared our year-over-year goals with you, and what you see here is a summary of our 2024 data against these goals. We did hit all of our KPIs and in some cases significantly surpassed them. We've set similar goals for 2025, and we're measuring two new channels, our advertising channel and the new podcast that we launched internally. We'll gather this data this year to set a baseline and then set goals at subsequent years. So what do the data show us? And how does this inform the programming for 2025? We did see strong growth this year, and that means two things. Our audiences engage and sticking with us, which we're very pleased about, and also new people are attracted to and are reading or watching the content. This means we're on target with our storytelling and visuals and that the analytics are serving us well when we need to course correct. Our campaigns in 2024 were hugely successful. This success again proves what we already know, and that is that when we bring a strategy to address a challenge and plan for an array of communications tools to address that challenge, we call these campaign level, that the result yields greater success for the city and for the community. And we'll show you in a moment what we're doing to double down on this in 2025. So what is new this year? I won't read everything on the screen, but as we mentioned, we are doubling down on our campaigns, focusing at least on at least one in each strategic focus area, and I'll show you more about that in a moment. We've launched the city's podcast, and we'll be tinkering with that this year to decide if this should be an external effort. Right now, we're practicing and doing it internally. We launched two episodes last week, and we'll be launching a third this week. Micah was the star of the show. He got to launch the first episode. We also launched, and can I get a drumroll, please? The city's merch site. I know you all were very excited about a merch site. We have a few items on there. I would say maybe about 10 or 15 items. You'll see that grow in the coming month, but if you wanted to check it out, it is on our website under Experience. We're working with a famous puzzle artist. Are any of you familiar with the Dowdell Puzzles? Eric Dowdell? So he is an artist. He's going to be coming to Rancho Cordova, and I am partnering with Shelley and with Cheryl, so with the community council and the MAC. And we will be working with this puzzle artist to create a piece of art that contains iconic places in Rancho Cordova. He will actually create art. He'll create a mural. So we'll have some art hanging here in City Hall, some in the MAC. There'll be a mural somewhere here in the city outside. And but in addition to that, and this is really exciting, we will actually have a puzzle of Rancho Cordova. And for one year, we have exclusive rights to this puzzle, and then after that, it is placed in major retailers like Costco, Target, and Walmart. We'll also be part of the campaign to celebrate America's 250th birthday, and we will be one of the cities featured in that. So that's pretty exciting. And you probably just got your March issue of Rancho Cordova News, and so you'll notice that that has a new look and feel. We also have some tech things that we're launching. Mayor Pulopati got to use the new teleprompter for her mayor luncheon. We are using AI for photos and website thanks to our colleagues in IT. We'll be working on that fairly soon. And then we will be launching something called HootSuite, which helps us have greater efficiencies both on the posting and on the measuring side for social media. So you've seen this slide, but you saw it in a different context. You saw it in the budget context. But these are some of the communications campaigns and projects that we will be implementing to support the city's strategic focus areas. I mentioned that we wanted to give you a sense of how we determine our strategic focus and programming, so you can see how some of these efforts ladder up to the strategic focus areas that you decided on during your visioning session. Our process is that we, you know, we meet with our city manager, our department heads, our division managers, and we look at what the needs are for the year. And then we take a look at what are the themes that are emerging and what efforts can be combined for the greatest results and also efficiency. So some of these are campaign-level efforts, such as the Zinfandel Pedestrian Overcrossing, a new campaign that we're calling Grow Strong Neighborhoods. This will be very education-focused. We will be supporting the economic development team as they launch their strategic plan, and that will be a campaign-level effort. We're also working on concepting out campaigns for Smart City, and we have been working with the city manager's office on a campaign for the Rancho Cordova Youth Center. We also have, as you can see, other one-off efforts that have a very tailored approach that also ladder up to these strategic focus areas. Lastly, we wanted to give you a sense of what our work plan looks like. This is our Q1 work plan, and it's really, we call it our roadmap for the quarter. You'll see three main areas: proactive communications, foundational communications, and city council support. This doesn't account for our reactive work, but rather lays out the proactive plans for the quarter. Since Q1 is well underway, many of these projects are either completed or in the planning stages. Some are ongoing, so work plans are updated each quarter to keep our team as proactive as possible and also our community as updated as possible. And with that, we are happy to answer any questions you might have.
This puzzle thing, once it goes, once it goes to local stores, do we get royalties off of the sales?
We do not get royalties off of the sales, but we will have our, we have our own merch site, and for the first year, we will be selling it on the merch site. We actually can, I guess, sell it in perpetuity on the merch site for as long as we want.
Oh, good.
So puzzles, Christmas tree ornaments, beach towels, hats, all kinds of stuff are going to be available in the merch.
Correct, correct. Currently, there are sweatshirts, t-shirts. There's adult sizes and youth and children's sizes. We're working with Jen Larrett and adding some, some new items to that, so you'll see that grow in the coming months.
Because once upon a time, the Cordova Community Council managed like the merch, but this is back in the era when you actually had to order it, and then it had to be delivered. I think at that point, it went to The Grapevine. And then suddenly, we were in the delivery business. We had to have volunteers come in and make deliveries all over town to people who purchase stuff. And needless to say, that only lasted a few years before it burned us all out. So technology has now caught up. Now it's easy.
Yes, it is easy, and it's all online. And yeah, you can order it, order whatever you'd like and whatever size and.
And Siri and Mike and I were in a potential sister cities lobby in Korea, and they had a gift shop, right, for their city. It was mainly about their anime characters. It was their, like, their mascot, I guess, for the city.
And the photo booth with the mascot.
Yeah, and the photo booth that went along with it. It was.
I can't wait to order my Rancho Rocket.
Rancho Rocket?
Yeah, the Rancho Rocket.
First merchandise store, second gift shop in the lobby.
Is this the official picture now, Maria?
This is, this is one of them, yes.
It looks good.
Yeah.
Like it?
Yeah, we're all blue, yeah.
We didn't even plan that.
Yeah.
Except for Garrett is gray.
Well, he got a blue shirt.
The shirt is blue. I didn't get the memos messed up.
Okay, colleagues, any more questions?
Well, Maria, the numbers are incredible. It does look to me like the website is, and for the police department and the city is sort of plateauing. Population's still going up. Does this meet any industry trend you're aware of? Like.
There was a time before COVID where we were a little bit concerned. We started to see our numbers fall, and then COVID happened, and everybody was being pushed to websites. So websites kind of had a resurgence. I think what we're seeing now is just it's getting back into that steady area. We drive a lot of our traffic there. And so what you're seeing is growth in people, us meeting people where they're getting information, and then we're driving them to the website to gather additional information. Some people just want a headline. Some people want more. And so that's why we have different channels.
It might be interesting to compare or throw in that graph or subsequent graph, community council numbers, Chamber of Commerce numbers, to kind of say like, community-wide, is this, are we bucking the trend, leading the trend, lagging the trend? You know what I mean? If there's any other local sort of data we could look at. I'd love to say, you know, let's look at Sack Counties or, you know, Citrus Heights or Folsoms or something, but I don't know if they have anything publicly available enough to compare with.
We can look into that, absolutely.
Comparison's always, always good. Obviously, you want growth. That's, that's a win by itself, but yeah. To say you're beating like the trend in the state or the region or whatever. And we might actually learn something by looking at chamber web activity or community council web activity. I think those two are probably vastly different, is my guess, because of the number of events that happen on one of those. The other question I had was Nextdoor seems hugely impactful here. Like, add the others up. It's the Nextdoor view number, but that was not my perception out there. So do you have any, any feedback on that?
Yeah, and the team can jump in too. But Nextdoor is one of those channels where they made a decision to create a different algorithm. So if you are a resident and you're posting, you're in one feed. And then if you are an agency or a business, you're in another feed. And the two do not meet. So you actually have to sign up to get our. So while Nextdoor has huge numbers, huge numbers are not seeing our Nextdoor posts, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Well, and besides that, Nextdoor is not, is no longer filtered so that you only get your local, your local Nextdoor.
Yeah, that's pretty annoying.
You can get it from all over everywhere.
Yeah, across the river.
Yeah, absolutely. So, so they can inflate their numbers because they're reaching Granite Bay.
Is there a campaign or something we can do to get more people to sign up for city stuff? Is that a feasible?
We have, so the way that.
If there's activity there, I'm thinking, like, how can you best get to it?
Right, the way that you jump is if there's a lot of engagement on your post. So that is what gets you into the other stream. So if there.
Sometimes we don't want a lot of engagement on the post.
Correct, correct. Yeah, there's, there's.
Given the nature of social media.
Yeah. We're, I will say, we're very pleased with how our other channels are performing. And so we still use Nextdoor for certain things, but it's not one of our main channels.
Actually, I'm happy to know that they did finally provide some way for you to get into Nextdoor, because you know, that was, that was always the weakness. There was, if you didn't live there, there was no way for you to, to post to Nextdoor.
Right, and we can post. We cannot see resident posts from the city channel. We can only see what they comment on, on our posts, so.
And it is challenging for us. I mean, I can't see Linda's neighborhood or, or anything further away than that. I can't even see like Sun River. It's too far away.
Oh, you're kidding?
No.
I'm with Joe. I get stuff from everywhere.
Every idiot.
Folsom.
Oh, I get, I get, I get that, but I can't. It cuts me off from like your neighborhood. I can't see anything.
You're kidding?
No, it's too far away. But it'll show me like North Highlands. Yeah, lost dogs in North Highlands. I get a lot of that.
Okay, we're gonna see if we have any public comment.
Yes, Darryl Langwell. You'll have up to three minutes.
Won't take that long. Darryl Langwell, Vineyards Neighborhood. Good evening, Mayor, council members. The Rancho merchandise, is that going to be available at the booths at the different events that the city sets up? Or is it going to be strictly online?
It will be strictly online, but we can have a QR code at the events for people to scan and directly connect to where it is.
My only feedback is, you guys do a great job, by the way. The events newsletter is kind of like beerified. It's just like a lot of beer trivia events, and it's kind of like beer trivia pollution trying to find what aren't the beer trivia events. That's my only comment. And I drink a lot of beer, not that much.
How funny.
Well, thank you, Maria. Like I said, short and succinct, awesome. And we really, we really appreciate everything that you and your team do. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, council.
And I will tell anybody who, who doesn't know yet, Lauren is an absolute master at creating a slideshow. I have to tell you. She just, she took everything for the pro-youth